All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 24th meeting of the Glendale City Council being called to order at 6:01 PM. May we have the roll call, please?
Yes, council members. Asatryan?
Here.
Brotman?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Mayor Kasakian?
Here. And joining us this evening for the flag salute, I know on the agenda it says Mayor Arti Kasakian, but I have taken the liberty to invite with us to our chambers some very special guests. So as we rise for the flag salute, I'd like us all to direct our attention to some very special young men and women who are joining us from the Crescent Valley High School Air Force ROTC program led by Tech Sergeant Marua. Please join me in welcoming Christine Kim, Esther Wong, Emily Terosian, Erin Kim, and Rohan Koppola. Please rise for the presentation of the colors.
Please remain standing for the presentation of the colors.
Colors. Detail. Pull.
Put your right hand over your heart.
Preset. Arms.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Port.
Please remain standing.
Ready, move.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please remain standing for the reading of the invocation.
Today's invocation will be given by Associate Pastor Iris Ozolins of Vallejo Drive, Seventy Adventist Church.
Ladies and gentlemen, let's pause for a prayer. Eternal God, we praise your name forever and ever. You have all wisdom and power. You control the course of history. You give wisdom to the wise and knowledge to the scholars. Tonight, we make intercession on behalf of these leaders of our city who are in positions of authority. We pray for our mayor, our city council members, and all other local leaders. We pray that as our leaders seek the kingdom of God above all else and live righteously, they will receive from you everything they need to lead our city. May the decisions made by our leaders will be inspired and directed by you. We ask you to fill them with wisdom, understanding, discernment, and knowledge. Draw them to you and cause them to know and fulfill your purpose. We ask you to make their hearts pliable, willing, and obedient to your will. Cause each of their lives to glorify your own name. And as they have gathered tonight to work on the issues that need to be resolved and challenges overcome, pour out a spirit of cooperation between them and well up humility in their hearts to make adjustments when they are necessary. God, give them clarity to know what issues are the most important and give them ears to hear and hearts to understand the needs of the communities in the city. We also pray specifically for their wives and husbands and children of our leaders. We ask that you draw near to them and give them the wisdom and how to best support one another while their loved ones is at work. Thank you for being our God and for guiding us and fulfilling our hearts and our city with your grace and love. Amen.
Amen. All right. And Tech Sergeant Marua, did the students leave? Can we bring them if they're still around? I'd like them all to introduce themselves and say hello if they're still out there. And, all right. And Clerk Abadjan, may we have your report, please?
Yes. The agenda for the January 31st, 2023 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, January 26th, 2023 on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
All right. Thank you. And I think we have Tech Sergeant Marua coming back with our CDROTC members. I'd like to ask the students to come up and just introduce themselves briefly. Tell us again your name, perhaps what year you are at school and what you're planning to do after high school, so we get to know some of the fine young future leaders in our community.
Nice to meet you all. My name is Christine Kim. I am a junior at Crescent Valley High School, and I hope to attend a four-year university after high school.
I am Cadet Rohan Gopala. I'm a sophomore, and I hope to attend a four-year university after high school.
I am Esther Hong. I am a junior in high school, and I want to also continue my education.
My name is Emily Terosian. I'm a sophomore, and I also plan to continue my education.
I'm Erin Kim. I'm a junior, and I also plan to continue my education and a four-year university.
All right. Excellent. Thank you. And Tech Sergeant Marua, how long has this program been going on in Crescent Valley High School?
It actually began in, uh...
If you can come up to the podium?
Yes, sir. So, given me I'm a little new here, I just retired in January, and so I took on the position just recently. But it actually began in 88, so it's been around quite a while. There's a lot of activity. There's a lot of programs that we have with inside of our program. We have flight simulators, and we have our drill ceremony, and we also have a raider team, which is kind of like a SWAT competition, but it's more obstacle course based, something like that. So it's a great program. I came, and there hasn't been an instructor there for about two years. And the way it works is if there's not an Air Force instructor, then the program doesn't exist. So it was actually scheduled to go away, and I looked into it, kind of stalked them on Instagram and saw that they needed an instructor, and I just moved here to Los Feliz, and I took the position. But it's a great program. The students are all amazing, and Coach Waters has been the head teacher substitute. He's been a permanent substitute there, so.
Great. Well, thank you and welcome. I know we're all very familiar with Lieutenant Colonel Worley, who was active within ROTC. I see some heads nodding back there. You know, he was a fixture in our community. It's good to see that the torch has been passed on to someone who will keep the program going.
Oh, yeah. There's a passion here. I appreciate your time, and thank you for having my students here.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening. Thank you for leading us in the flag salute. Take care. All right, with that, let's have the next item on the agenda.
The next item are consent items, including minutes. Oh, actually, I apologize. Presentations on appointments, agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, February 7th, 2023, by John Tartalian, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor Kasakian, members of City Council. Next week seems to be a very light agenda. We have two consent items. The first will be an award of a public service agreement for on-call professional engineering services by the Public Works Department. And the second item will be from the Library Department regarding the Building Forward Grant as it relates to the Grand View Library. And under action items, Community Development will provide a report seeking direction regarding the specific, the downtown-specific plan hotel moratorium that council had placed earlier in the year.
Okay. Great. Thank you. What is next?
Next are consent items, including minutes. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Okay. Would anyone like to pull any items? Do we have any cards that were submitted? If there aren't any, do we have a motion and a second?
I'll move the item.
Second. All right. May we have a roll call, please?
Council members. Asatryan?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Kasakian?
Yes. What is next?
Next, our City Council and staff comments.
All right. Who would like to go first? Councilmember Brotman?
Nobody else is. Just one thing. I participated for the first time in the homeless, what do we call it? The homelessness count? Homelessness count, yeah. I actually see somebody in the audience here, Ramella, who was also one of the volunteers. So it was my first time. It was very interesting, just to see how the survey is conducted and the challenges. I don't think people realize that, you know, it's not just walking down the street and saying one, two, three, four, five. I mean, you're actually interviewing the unhoused people that we see on the street. And if somebody is not willing to be interviewed, we actually don't end up counting them. So there is kind of a structural undercount element to it, which I didn't really appreciate. And it was just great to be with the other volunteers and with some of our staff and people from Ascencia, people from Home Again LA, and hear some of the stories about, you know, the real particulars of each individual, each human being who's homeless and what got them there and what is preventing them from getting into housing. We hear the term "service resistant," but it's much deeper than that, right? There are lots of reasons why people who actually do want housing sometimes are not able to get into it or not able to stay in it. So I thought it was a great experience, and I recommend it to anybody who has the time to do that. And I want to give a shout out in particular to Arsenia Sayon, who runs our homeless continuum of care programs. She's just amazing. You know, I spent, I was in the group with her. We were in the car together. We hung out together for several hours. We talked a lot. And to hear the passion that she has for this work, this is not a job for her. She knows these individuals by name. She knows their backstories. She cares deeply about each one and the humanity of each individual. I was just so super impressed by her and by everybody else on staff that participated. So I just wanted to share that. And if she's listening, just to say, it was a real education for me, and I thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Brotman. I'll make sure that she receives that message from you. Appreciate that.
All right. Who would like to go next? Councilmember Asatryan?
I just have one announcement. Just want to let everyone know that LA County has launched grants for micro businesses. They're giving away up to $54 million to micro businesses and nonprofits, starting from $2,500 up to $25,000 for entities making less than $50K. And then there's going to be a second phase for these grants that will open up in late February for small businesses. You can apply and get more information at grants.lacounty.gov. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else that would like to go? Councilmember Najarian?
Thank you. We have a slide to post. And on behalf of LA Metro, we are offering free rides on all of our bus, rail, and bike system on Saturday, February 4th, to honor Transit Equity Day and the birthday of civil rights icon Rosa Parks, who in 1955 famously refused to give up her seat because she was black. Parks's action and courage led to the U.S. Supreme Court ruling that segregation on transit was unconstitutional. It was an important milestone in dismantling the Jim Crow laws that persisted in the U.S. for a century after the end of the Civil War. For all those reasons, Transit Equity Day is a very important day for our agency. Transit Equity Day highlights the right of all people to affordable public transportation and speaks directly to our core mission to provide mobility, to connect all people to opportunity. Other agencies as well, including MetroLink, the regional rail provider, are also offering free fares on Saturday, February 4th. If you're going to ride Metro, all the seats are free. The turnstiles will be unlocked at the rail stations. You do not need to tap your tap card at the fare validators. Also, the bike share is free. You need to select one-dash-ride at any Metro bike share kiosk, and you will ride basically for free. MetroLink is free. Just come on down. A great weekend ride is to travel from our train station to LA Union Station, Historic Union Station, have a cup of coffee there, and then take the Orange County Line all the way down to San Clemente Pier, and eventually all the way down to Oceanside where there's restaurants and nice places to shop right at the beach. That's all free. So Saturday, February 4th, happy birthday, Rosa Parks. Transportation is free in LA County.
Thanks. And that includes our bee lines, I'm assuming? Yeah. Excellent. So you heard it here, folks. February 4th, ride the buses for free and take a trip somewhere, see something. Anything else, Councilmember Najarian?
That's all. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Devine?
Nothing. Thank you.
Okay. I don't have anything else to add. It was another busy week of events. There's, I attended a couple of events, including the 100th anniversary for Rock Haven. It was a birthday party held in La Crescent and Montrose area, very well attended. Also present was Senator Anthony Portantino, who received many thanks from everyone for the money he's been able to secure for the preservation of Rock Haven. So congratulations to the organizers of that event. We are doing our best to make sure that the premises are safe, that we're trying to get people access to it while protecting the safety of the public, and we have been monitoring the status of those structures through the reins. Also, we had the official swearing-in ceremony or the badge-pinning ceremony for our new police chief today, which was also very, very well attended. It had been a while since we'd had a standing-room-only event in our police community room. So thank you to all who attended and are helping welcome our new Chief Manny Sid to the Glendale family. I also had the opportunity to attend a demonstration organized by the Armenian Youth Federation of the Western U.S., who are calling upon our government in, here in the United States to hold Azerbaijan accountable to U.S. law Section 907 of the Freedom Support Act, which that country is in violation of by blocking any humanitarian aid to the 120,000 civilians who are in Artsakh. It was a demonstration at the federal building, and then it was, there was a peaceful march to the Zari consulate. I just bring this up to remind folks that as the business of our city continues and as our problems seem great, and sometimes maybe for individuals insurmountable, there's 120,000 civilians literally waiting it out, fighting for their lives, for their right to live on their indigenous lands, and it's a human rights tragedy and catastrophe unfolding. I appreciate my colleagues all speaking out against this, and I hope we continue to do so. That is all I have for this portion. Does staff have any comments? Is there any?
Mayor Kasakian, thank you.
Okay. All right. So let's move on to the next item on the agenda. We have some cards submitted, as well as I think we have some folks on the phone. So the first speaker for community event announcements, a three-minute portion, first speaker will be Mike Mohill. Mr. Mohill, don't go far.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Mike Mohill. I'd like to talk about the Sears property again tonight. It's a sore subject with me. And it should be with you. This council is no different than other previous councils. You talk about parks and recreation, and you do what? Nothing. Nothing, nothing, nothing. If we were going to have an event today in the city of Glendale, and we want to have a central park to have this festivity, where would we have to go? For Dugald Park? But if we had the property called Sears property, it could be right there in downtown Glendale where it belongs. We once had a central park, but the previous council, before this council, did a couple things. One, they brought a library there, because they didn't want to spend the money on buying property outside of the median area. So it was cheap to go ahead and use that property at the park. Then they went ahead and put a recreational center there. And the final straw, the final nail in the coffin, God bless the Armenians, but we have a museum there now and a poster stamp for a so-called little park for important events. We need it, you know? We don't need 682 new apartments in Glendale. All it's going to do is create more density and more traffic for downtown Glendale. This council wants to get people to get into their bikes instead, just like in Communist China. Are we going to be Communist China with people riding their bicycles here? I don't think people in Glendale, they want to ride their bikes, but not bike, but they want to ride their cars, not bikes. We have Du Majin Park up there. Those people have their park. We have the sports complex, we got, and then we also have the rental area. Those people were there the other day, and they were thanking you for making their place very nice, all their horses and so forth. But nobody is there for South Glendale and their needs. We need a park like every major cities in this country. And this city, with a population of over 200,000, does not have a central park. We have what we call mini parks. And that's what you're playing for the Sears property, aren't you? That one acre of land, big, big deal. We need to use that land over there at Sears. We don't need 682 apartments. And why don't you make those apartments all low-income? Ah, rather than this 69. We need, you can make it market-driven apartments? Why don't you, let's not be hypocritical. Make that 682 low-income housing. That way you'll get lots of votes. Thank you.
All right. Ramella Eragi, next speaker. You will have three minutes.
Exactly. Make that before the housing, that Sears property. I second that. Mike. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Mayor Kasakian, I think that's a correct pronunciation in Armenia.
It is. Thank you. I appreciate that.
And actually, I feel like I'm a part of this, already a part of this chamber. The only difference is I'm this side, and you're on the other side of the track. Well, yeah. Last week, I attended many events, so I feel like to talk about it. Actually, last week, I talked to a couple of my friends, and one of them said that, said about her parents, that they died waiting for affordable housing or senior living. It is really sad to hear that. And another friend that I talked to them, they're a couple that they're struggling to pay their rents. And the most importantly, that I attend homeless count in the city of Glendale, and actually, we're accompanied with police officers. And obviously, we're talking about high rents and homelessness and et cetera. And actually, one of the police officers said that he also had got a problem with high rents. He's struggling sort of to pay rent. And I said, seriously? Police officers? I mean, they're complaining about high rent. And actually, there was another event that I attended last week, it was Centennial Celebration of Rock Haven. And I, in that part of celebration, I met Senator Portantino. Is that correct?
Uh huh.
The pronunciation. And actually, I introduced myself as a affordable housing activist. And actually, he said that there's a lot of resources for that matter, I mean, for affordable housing. And we've got to fight for that, to get that resources. And as a matter of fact, I have a suggestion for you guys. If you want that ticket, if some of you that are seeking the higher office seat, so you better, I mean, I suggest that you, that's your ticket to the higher office, the affordable housing and housing for seniors. I guess I'm done, right?
All right. Thank you, Ramella. And is there a caller or no?
We have one caller. Yes. Our one caller is Gary Chakmakian. Gary, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Good evening, councilman. I'll make it very brief. I'm a longtime Glendale resident. I am calling regarding my heating bill, my gas bill. This month, January, my gas bill was $633, which is three times more than my property tax. Now, back in October was 43, November was 166, December was 300, January was $633. When I called the gas company, they told me they don't know why, except, you know, it's a supply and demand situation, and I should bring my thermostat to 50 degrees. I'm 75 years old, and they want me to put my thermostat to 50 degrees. I mean, you have to do something about this. This is between staying hungry or paying a gas bill. I'd just like to know, what are you going to do about this? This is not a matter of eating a steak or a vegetable, I must say. This is not a luxury item. It's a heating. I haven't spent more gas than before. Just the price went up from 61 cents a term to $2.70 a term. I mean, are you going to do something about this? This is a very impacted issue. I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And those are all the calls.
Okay. All right. Well, I appreciate the caller who called in frustrated about the natural gas prices, but I can assure him that is not something that is within the control of the city of Glendale. That is, it's an issue that is affecting the entire state, if not the country. It is a factor of SoCal gas, raising the prices, and a number of factors have contributed to that. If you go online and you read the news or follow some of the news stories that are out there, it'll give you just some of the reasons, which is that December, and just looking at December, cold snap has brought widespread below normal temperatures, natural gas consumption has been high, and there's been reduced natural gas flows and pipeline constraints, including maintenance in West Texas. So there's a number of factors that have resulted in the perfect storm. You're not unique in this. We've heard about these exorbitant gas prices in the multiple hundreds of dollars. It's unfortunate, but I also did receive a note from our SoCal gas representative saying that now gas prices have dropped by, I think, 68%. So we're hoping that'll provide some relief, but we feel, we hear you, we feel your frustration. Unfortunately, I don't know what we can do as a council on that item. Okay, if there's no other callers, I was submitted a card, but I think that's for the five-minute portion towards end. What is next?
Next is the adoption of ordinances. A, management services regarding ordinance repealing Chapter 8.42 of the Glendale Municipal Code entitled Polystyrene and Single-Use Plastic Products and replacing it with a new Chapter 8.42 entitled Plastic Waste Reduction. Rotman 11023, one. B, resolution amending the fiscal year 2022/23 citywide fee schedule to add administrative fines and fees in conjunction with enforcement of the Plastic Waste Reduction Regulations, two. Alternative fee resolution amending the fiscal year 2022/2023 citywide fee schedule to add administrative fines and fees in conjunction with enforcement of the Plastic Waste Reduction Regulations.
All right, Mr. Galanian.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Kasakhian, member of City Council. Back in November of 2022, council provided direction for staff to prepare ordinance regarding plastic waste reduction and draft an ordinance that was introduced on January 10th, as well as there were comments from the status to make some adjustments to the ordinance and bring it back for adoption. And here we are this evening, and I'm going to turn it over to David Jones, our Sustainability Officer, to present this item for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian, Mayor Kasakhian, and members of the City Council. I'm looking forward to presenting this item again. So what I'm going to do is I'm just going to review where we came from, review what was discussed at the City Council meeting of January 10th, and then look at our steps going forward regarding this ordinance. So just if council will bear with me, I'll just go through these items again, just so we're all on the same page as what we're discussing. So when the ordinance came for introduction back in January 10th, we were looking at six items regarding Plastic Waste Reduction Regulations. So the first of those was regarding polystyrene foodware and polystyrene items. So just for clarification, that means to prohibition on the use, distribution, and sale of polystyrene foodware, polystyrene coolers, polystyrene packing materials, polystyrene egg cartons, polystyrene pot use trays, and polystyrene meat and fish trays. And we had suggested that that come into effect April 24th. Also coming to effect in April 24th is a prohibition on the use and distribution of single-use plastic straws, stirrers, and utensils. Now, City Council knows we have foodware accessories on access, foodware accessories on request ordinance. These items have to be requested in any case. As introduced, we recommended that in April 2024, some other items come into effect. The first of these is establish disposable foodware standards, where that means disposable foodware would have to be accepted within our composting and recycling program. We also recommended the implementation of a disposable cup charge, where if you're supplied with a disposable cup, you'd be charged 25 cents for that disposable cup. The disposable cup charge would be retained by the food and beverage providers for their use. Also, on April, we recommended that we have reusable foodware for dining, on-premise dining. So that is food or raw food and beverage providers, so for the consumption on the premise of a food and beverage provider shall only be served using reusable foodware, except that disposable paper, food wrappers, sleeves and bags, foil wrappers, paper napkin straws, and paper trays, and plate liners shall be allowed for dining on the premises, so as long as they meet the disposable foodware standards that we just discussed. And also, we recommended that in April 2024, we have a restriction that where no city employee, representative, contractor, agent, or official shall use, sell, distribute, or otherwise provide any single-use plastic beverage bottles while acting on behalf of the city or acting pursuant to a contract or city agreement. So based on discussion at that City Council meeting, City Council wanted us to amend the phased-in approach of certain parts of the ordinance. So where, City Council wanted us to have a 180-day period between adoption of the ordinance and before the ordinance in essence take effect. That 180-day period was to allow for education, was to allow for food and beverage providers to understand the requirements of the ordinance, for city staff to help them get an understanding of the ordinance, and for them just to prepare their operations so the ordinance can go into effect. And then the only thing that was to be moved to the January 1st, 2024, would be the reusable foodware for on-premise dining. Also, council members had some issues regarding the last, the language regarding plastic beverage bottles. And they wanted clarification where city employees, representatives, contractors, agency officials are not prohibited from bringing their own food and beverages for personal consumption, or acting on behalf of the city, or acting pursuant to city contract or agreement. So we just wanted to clarify that if the city was putting on a bench and the city was providing water and everything, we would not allow that in single-use beverage bottles. But if an individual was coming to a city event, they would be allowed to bring those items with them. So we put that clarification in the ordinances that you have in your packets. Also in the packet, staff did make a recommendation that we would align with the City Council's direction, but just an option would be to move the disposable foodware standards to begin January 1, 2024. And the only reason staff recommended that or suggested that again would be to give food and beverage providers within the city the opportunity to make sure that they can comply with those foodware standards, look at their contracts, look at their supply chains, and make any adjustments that they would have to make to make sure that that can be done. Also, City Council asked staff to look at the administrative fine schedule. As introduced, the fine schedule will set up as follows. There'll be two warning letters. And after the first warning letter, there'll be a $25 per violation charge that'd be capped at $300 annually. So there is a resolution to adopt that or to amend that for option two, where the first violation would be $100. The second violation would be $200, and the third violation would be $500. But there would be no cap regarding those fees and charges. So there's two resolutions in the pack for council to discuss and decide on which option they want to choose regarding that. Regarding outreach, so I have to admit, and I have to say that the outreach on this ordinance to date has not been as effective as it should be. That being said, staff were always committed to doing an outreach program, whether that's prior to the ordinance being adopted or whether that was post-adoption of the ordinance. So it was always intended for us to do a comprehensive outreach program. That being said, we have done some outreach. We sent a survey out to over 613 food and beverage providers located in the city of Glendale. And that was done in February of 2022. The response rate to that was not as high as what we wanted, what we expected. We also coordinated and got the, and Glendale Chamber of Commerce helped us. They also sent the survey link and information to the beverage establishment members. Also, with Glendale Chamber of Commerce, their October meetings stunned and formed the chamber that staff was working on this ordinance, that the ordinance would be coming to the November 29th City Council meeting for discussion, and for them to let the members know that that discussion was going to happen. This ordinance has been discussed at up to now four meetings. One meeting, the Sustainability Commission, back in March 2022, where we received guidance from the Sustainability Commission about the items that should be included in the ordinance. So March 2nd, March 3rd, that was, I apologize, 2022. It was discussed at the March 22nd City Council meeting and the November 29th City Council meeting, as well as the January 10th meeting, and obviously as well as tonight. There are some alternatives for council to look at and whether adopting this ordinance. The first would be for plastic waste reduction in the phases recommended by staff, just also adopting the resolution that we're talking about, about the fee structure that council may want to do. And the alternative, the second alternative, we adopt the ordinance in the two-phase system, the two-phase approach recommended by City Council at the January 10th City Council meeting. Regarding next steps, I mentioned earlier that staff had always intended to and will do an extensive outreach and education program regarding this ordinance. Based on the council wanting that 180-day period between adoption of the ordinance taking effect, staff recommend or will be doing intentionally a five-month outreach campaign starting January 2023, well, probably starting February now, since today's the last day of January, going through July 2023. The education campaign will focus on assisting organizations to comply with the proposed ordinance. And at minimum, the outreach will include, staff will host public meetings and present the ordinance and be able to answer questions regarding it. Staff will develop informational webinars, as we did with the disposable foodwares and accessories ordinance. Staff will do virtual workshops, and also staff will implement a social media campaign. This will work through our website, through our newsletter, and through all of our social media programs, which we have within the Sustainability Office now. That will include overview of the ordinance, what it is, a text summary of the ordinance, what is banned, what is not banned, so pictures, so it's easily identifiable. There's items that should be allowed and that are not allowed. The effective dates of when different parts of the ordinance will come into effect. We also provide a lot of resources for food and beverage providers and vendors, copy of the ordinance, any press releases, educational videos, and fact sheets and brochures that we will develop. And we have an FAQ section, a frequently asked questions about the ordinance. And this FAQ section, I think, will be vital because it's within this FAQ section that we'll discuss the exemptions that come along with this ordinance, this proposed ordinance. Because staff have proposed that certain exemptions, there's a process for a food and beverage provider to exempt themselves from the ordinance. And one of those exemptions would be regarding reusable foodware for on-dining premise, where, for example, a food and beverage provider may find it difficult to install dishwasher or have dishwasher capabilities, or even contract out for dishwashing. We would allow them not, or their premises is unsuitable to hold a dishwasher. There's an exemption process that they would come into us and say, "Look, we can't do the reusable on-dining premises because we don't have those dishwashing facilities." There'd also be general exemption processes from the ordinance, and this will be highlighted in the frequently asked questions section. We have an exemption process where a vendor may be exempt from the requirements of this chapter and whole, where showing or complying with these requirements would cause either significant undue hardship to them. And what we mean by undue hardship, there is no alternative to using single-use plastics, where an alternative to the single-use plastics is unavailable at a commercially reasonable price. And we have done a lot of research into the pricing comparison of plastics and non-plastic materials. We looked at, referred to the UCLA Luscombe Study, which specifically looked into this, into the cost of alternatives. Yes, some alternatives do cost a little bit more. Many alternatives are price comparable, and many other alternatives are cheaper than plastic items. A good example being egg cartons. Within Southern California and within this part of the industry as a whole, more and more manufacturers and distributors are bringing non-plastic disposable foodwares to market because they know that ordinance such as these ones are being passed. You're getting whole countries now, the UK and other countries that are banning straws and single-use plastic items. So there's definitely a market shift to having more and more of these materials available. And also, there's exemptions where compliance with this title is unduly burdensome to the food and beverage providers. So they'll come to us and just say, "There is no way that we can comply." We would obviously discuss that with them, have that talk with them, and then where appropriate, give them the exemption. So we're not, we're not being so restrictive that there would be no exemptions. Within California, some sort of pro-plastic prohibition or regulations have been passed in over 160 cities. In Southern California, specifically around us, 16 cities have passed some such regulations. Again, companies, when they, County of Los Angeles, did their study regarding their disposable plastics ordinance, they found to date, very few to none, food and beverage providers had actually asked for an exemption from this ordinance. So it is a lot more common that food and beverage providers and vendors are aware of these types of ordinance and are willing to work and can work in the space to make sure that these ordinances do not impact their businesses negatively. So yeah, so we'll be doing a lot of that kind of outreach as part of our next steps regarding this ordinance. And again, staff will be available to work with, to answer questions to those food and beverage providers as we received questions then from the previous ordinances, disposable foodware and accessories ordinance. We got a number of phone calls from businesses. We talked to them, we talked them through the ordinance. And once we'd gone through that process, they understood what was required of them, and then they went away and hopefully complied. So that is my presentation today. I'm available to answer any questions, available to if there's any points of clarification that City Council would like to ask me. I'll do my best to make sure that we do clarify any of those issues.
Okay, so we have about 13 cards from individuals who have submitted cards to speak on this item, as well as, how many people do we have?
Four callers.
Four callers. I know that my colleagues have opinions and thoughts on this, and I do want to hear from them. I know they have probably questions and points of clarification, but I would like us to first hear from the public, and then we'll hear from my colleagues. So, and I say that because I had a number of folks say that, you know, "I want to speak on this item, but I have other plans." And for the sake of respecting their time, I'm going to listen. We'll hear from the public and then deliberate and ask questions. So three minutes each should be enough, I think. Let's go with the first speaker, Hambartson Pogosyan. Three minutes, Mr. Hambartson Pogosyan, followed by Alek Bartrusov. And whoever's going to speak next, you can come and sit in this first row. We can have you on deck. Mr. Bartrusov, I think you're fine where you are.
Good evening, council members. My name is Hambartson Pogosyan. I'm here on behalf of a restaurant, Vernaton, which is located at 1100 South Central Avenue. What is being proposed about that reusable, not disposable foodware? As I understood, it should be what, plastic or paper? We are all against about disposable foodware that will create more plastic waste. So that's all we wanted to say.
Okay, so you do not want plastic as a requirement?
No, we don't. I'm here with my friends. They, all of them have restaurants, and they all are against.
Okay. Yes. I'm sorry.
I'm just wondering, do you need someone to translate for you perhaps? I'm sorry, I guess you're talking to my head or stuff.
No, I'm sure.
Okay.
Well, that's what it doesn't say.
Sure, we'll try to speak up as best we can. So, Mr. Pogosyan, you are stating that you do not want disposable, you're against the use of plastic. You do not have plastic utensils and items in your restaurant?
We use it for to-go only.
Okay. So this would restrict the use of that for to-go. So this would not allow for those items to be used in to-go as well?
But we should use nothing.
That is what we're here to discuss. Staff, the recommendation is...
Some people require, under orders, to send utensils.
Okay. All right, well, don't go anywhere, I'm sure maybe one of my colleagues may have more questions for you. Let's try to get through some of the other speakers and we'll revisit for clarification since you are a restaurant owner. Mr. Bartusov, followed by Mesrop Abrahamyan.
Hello, Alec Bartusov here, speaking on behalf of the Glendale Environmental Coalition to speak in favor of the ordinance. We strongly encourage you to adopt this ordinance and front-load the necessary outreach needed to inform and assist business owners while also ensuring effective enforcement mechanisms in place to minimize violations and reduce our reliance on plastic disposables. In this case, that would be to go for option two. We all know disposables due to our community and our environment. Take a look at the coffee bean just up on the street on Glendale, where you see trash piling up on the sidewalk and in the gutters every single day. That trash is there because the bins they use will never be large enough to accommodate the volume of plastic cups that come out of that establishment. And with your recent decision to close the Shoal landfill, where will all this trash go and at what cost? You've said in the past there will be rising costs associated with the closure of the landfill, and later today you'll be discussing trash rate increases. Shouldn't we be doing everything we can to minimize our production of trash? We hope you'll pass this very important ordinance tonight. This is a massive global problem and one that deserves a serious response. Again, we support the upfront outreach needed to educate small businesses, but also an enforcement mechanism with teeth. After all, what good is an ordinance if it's not going to deter violators? Please choose action over symbolism. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next is Mr. Mesrop Abrahamyan, followed by Mike Borisov.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I am one of the owners of the Great White Hut. We have three locations in Glendale, as well as a location called Winget up on Canata. As a food establishment owner, I will have to say that we've looked into reusables and we've looked into other types of disposables long before. The problem is that it does start to price us, price things higher and price things differently because, for example, forks, something that we use, 200, 300, 400 of them throughout all of our establishments, even a 30 cent increase, that adds up to, you know, 25, 27, 100, $3,000 a month in additional costs. We don't necessarily like to pass on all of our costs to our customers. Our establishment is one of the few ones where anybody can get a decent meal under $10. That becomes a bigger issue because, again, we don't want to impact the local people as much as we want to make profit. The other thing is that, you know, the cap, the moratorium on delivery caps for DoorDash and Postmates, things like that, that's also coming to an end. That's going to be increasing our costs. You know, the gas price increase that we all just talked about, that's going to be increasing all of our costs. I think, I am for the environment. I do think we, everybody should try to do good things for the environment, but I think, you know, this is, this is throwing pennies at a big change. This isn't going to solve much, and if anything, it's only going to impact negatively on the local businesses because it isn't something that will have a giant impact. You know, if we want to, if we want to have a bigger impact, if we want to figure out something that's going to have a bigger paradigm shift, I'm sure a lot of businesses would be for it, but for, for small businesses and businesses that are, you know, possibly doing 5%, 10%, 15% margin on profit, it's very difficult. It's not something that, you know, we want to be, we want to be constantly thinking about in the back of our minds of how are we going to, you know, make the next month's, you know, quota in terms of, you know, bare minimum, bare minimum profit to cover all of our employees, to cover taxes, to cover, you know, expenses and so forth. So I will say that, once again, I'm not against necessarily, you know, bettering the environment, but I am for much more, much more in-depth changes. So again, that's my view and that's my opinion on the matter. If you guys have any questions, I'm also able to answer those. Thank you very much for your time.
I think Mike, all right, go ahead, Councilmember Najarian.
Wait, Winget and Canata is you guys too?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
Why didn't you say so?
We try not to advertise, but yes, yeah. So we own, we own three, three Great White Huts in Glendale, we own a fourth one in, up in Sunland, we have one in North Hollywood, and then we have a place called The Bucket in Eagle Rock. We love Glendale.
You have The Bucket too in Eagle Rock?
Yes.
That's an icon.
Yes, we also...
They're in college.
Councilmember Devine.
I don't know much about these restaurants that I haven't been. Are they sit-down, serve, do you have servers?
We don't have servers. They're, some of them are sit-down, some of them are basically walk-ups. If you know the one, you may have seen the location behind Porto's on the corner, that little white booth.
Oh, right, 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 yeah.
Everybody's seen it, but not everybody's been to it. So that's one of the few places where you basically, all you can do is order at the window, and we have some chairs outside and that's it. So that, you know, that place is completely geared for to-go. It's, you know, people come, they place their order there, they take it out or they eat there, and we have a, you know, trash facilities, but the problem is that, you know, as I said, even something as small as forks, we go through a lot of forks. You know, it's not a, it's not a large item, it's not a, you know, it's not, it's not a huge loss or expense, but again, when you add it up over four, five, six, seven locations, it becomes, you know, a larger number. It becomes $3,000 of, you know, monthly expense that just appeared all of a sudden.
Thank you, thank you. Did you have a question before Councilmember Najarian? Go ahead.
I did because, before you go, I wanted to check with Mr. Jones about forks, just as an example, and the price difference, because I know you have some data on that.
We'll address all those. I think staff, I want to make sure that we get the totality of public's comments. If you have questions directed towards the speaker, let's address those and then staff can maybe answer these.
Yeah, well, what I was curious was, was how recently you looked into this, because I know that there've been a lot of changes, and that's why, but maybe we can come back to that.
We'll get back to it. Mike Borisov, followed by Ani Turosin.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. My name is Mike Borisov. I'm a student ex-official commissioner for the Sustainability Commission, and I think for the first time, most of our commissioners are together on this. We want to pass this ordinance because we don't want more plastic food waste anymore in the city. Particularly, what I think is really specific to this ordinance, which is very important, outreach to businesses. I was gonna do a completely different speech tonight, but after seeing a few business owners come up, I think it's important we realize that many of our businesses see that there's only plastic and that's it. They think that if we pass this ordinance, there won't be other alternatives or other utensils they could use, which is not true. There's a wide variety of options for non-plastic utensils and takeout items that they could utilize, and I think it's important for the city to do the hard work and help with public outreach for these businesses and individuals alike. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Ani Turosin, followed by Jennifer Pinkerton.
Good evening. I've been a Glendale resident and small business owner for over 20 years now in Glendale, and I am very opposed to this ordinance. I think it's written terribly, and I'll tell you why. So I'll just start with, you know, the average price of coffee in California is about $2.50, and just 10 years ago, that average price was $1.50. That's a 67% increase in the cost to the consumer, to put that just in perspective for you. That has risen, our incomes have risen only 25 to 30% over that same time period. So the cost of living is astronomically high already in Glendale. We have high rents, we have high natural gas, as we've heard today, fuel prices, even eggs to feed, you know, breakfast to our kids. So we're being squeezed left and right, whether it's as a resident or a small business owner. So amidst all of this going on in our community, in our economy, you know, having council member bring up this ordinance at this time just seems very tone-deaf to me. We have small businesses who've been trying to recover, you know, after the lockdowns and the pandemic, and this puts extra stress and regulation on them and the potential to lose a lot more customers. Not only is it tone-deaf, but I've seen zero evidence in the form of data or comprehensive reports that justifies this proposal. I've actually reached out to Mr. Jones, and I haven't received the reports or the data to justify this, just general links that really tell you nothing. So going back to that $2.50 coffee cup, imposing a 25 cent charge for every disposable cup for that coffee order is a 10% surcharge on top of that cost. And I don't, I remember not too long ago, Mayor Kusakian, you, you know, decreased the third-party food delivery fees for restaurants to give them, quote-unquote, "economic relief" during the lockdowns. So in that case, you know, it's okay to, to reprimand private entities who have surcharges on orders, but the government can go ahead and put a 10% charge on my coffee cup order with no, no explanation as to where those funds are going. A coffee cup at most costs about 5 cents to the restaurant owner to purchase, and you want to charge 25 cents to the end consumer for that coffee cup. So today I just highlighted one section of this terribly-written legislation to demonstrate how irrational its premises are. I urge the council to vote no on item 7A, the waste reduction ordinance. I also urge the council to use logic and data as justification for future ordinances, not to just go off of feelings and emotions. We all want the environment to be better, but as the previous speaker said, this is not the way to go around doing it. We need data, we need actual practical ways to implement these things. And the other thing I want to say is the exemption clause, to me, reads like, if you know someone in the city, they can get you exempted from this. That's how generally it is written, and by and large, I don't think this is going to help the environment at all. If anything, it's gonna hurt our residents and our small business owners.
Thank you, Mr. Ossian. Jennifer Pinkerton, followed by Monica Campagna.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I am here as a Glendale resident and member of the Glendale Environmental Coalition, urging you to adopt this ordinance. I think it'll make a significant positive benefit here in Glendale. An ordinance like this is necessary to help the city and businesses transition from one-way disposable practices to linear, I'm sorry, away from linear to circular practices. Also, we'll be joining a lot of other cities that have adopted similar ordinances because they realize this is very much an environmental necessity. I hope we make a decision on the ordinance on the basis of facts. Claims about plastic recycling are largely greenwashing. Very little plastic has ever been recycled over the course of the many decades that common single-use disposable plastic items have been prevalent in our society. Expanded polystyrene is never recycled. Technically, anything is recyclable, but the fact is that EPS or foam is never recycled. It's simply not a product that is easily managed. We all have to unlearn very, some very wasteful habits that we've acquired over the past 30 years with the cultural change towards single-use disposable items. And I just want to show you a prop. I mean, there's nothing in here that's unknown to anybody, but you talk about the environmental and business impacts, I'm gonna cover the brand name. This paper cup is not compostable because it has a polymer lining that is designed to make it moisture resistant. This plastic bag will never be recycled because it catches on recycling processing equipment, tangles the equipment. These types of bags are discarded at automated recycling centers. This fork will never be recycled because it's too small and it falls through the processing equipment. We have condiment containers also that are too small, same thing, they will never be recycled. This blast, black plastic container, this is crystallized plastic, optical sorters at automated recycling centers cannot see this equipment, they just don't register it at all. This is a thermoform plastic, it may or may not be recycled, sometimes there are markets for it, sometimes there are not. So we have to be cognizant of the environmental impacts. I mean, this is an egregious amount of waste from one meal that if you cook the equivalent at home, you simply would not be generating this amount of waste. I would contend, you know, we've learned to bring our own reusable bags, I think we can learn to adapt and move toward reusables on our own. I would also contend that if you can afford to eat out, you can afford to bring, you can afford to pay a 25 cent fee on disposable coffee cup, and I think it's highly appropriate because that disposable coffee cup gets into the waste stream, the city and all of us as taxpayers and taxpayers pay to have that cup managed. That cup has to be hauled, that cup has to be disposed. So I think it's highly appropriate to charge fees on disposable items. Is that my time? All right, thank you.
Yes, it is, thank you. Monica Campagna, followed by Cole Bazemore.
Thank you. I'm coming up with my Zanku chicken bag here, from my favorite restaurant. My reusable Zanku chicken bag. I wanted to just start by saying, my name is Monica Campagna, and I fully support this ordinance. I think it's totally wonderful package of things that all work together really well to confront some of the issues that some of the speakers have already written about. But first, I'll just say, polystyrene is a bottom feeder. It should never have even been allowed here, we should have banned this years ago. So to compare any cost of anything with this particular product right here isn't fair. This cost of this, I mean, they're finding this stuff leaks toxin, carcinogenic toxins into landfill, leachate, it goes into our oceans, we end up eating it, it's, there's costs all over the place with styrofoam. So I just wanted to focus on the possibilities because I really think, as a whole, our restaurants, if they, if they can embrace the whole concept that's being presented here, they end up actually with an opportunity to save money and, if not save money, at least come out probably even from what they are now and help our whole community with these costs that we're all talking about, with litter pickup, with water pollution fines that the city has to pay, the detrimental effects to our bodies and the oceans and the food that we eat. So we have to remember what these costs are when we're talking about costs. Those are huge costs. So if I don't purchase this or this because people aren't going to be getting those just willy-nilly now unless they ask for them, then I get this because someone forgot to bring their cup, then I can afford to purchase this or this instead of this. So it all works together, and there are so many options. I mean, this does not cost too much. This might cost a little bit more. You know, we have a lot of different possibilities now. There, for Zanku, if you're taking things to go, you know, you get your aluminum containers. Those are fine, they're extremely highly recycled. There's lots of, you know, if you have a to-go place, maybe you have plastic baskets and you can't, like a food truck situation the gentleman was speaking of, another place was able to save like $5,000 a year just by switching out to some plastic baskets for some of the customers to use that are actually going to stay and eat in the area, and then they just bring them back. Or you can use things like this that don't cost much. And then you've got tons of options for fiber-based compostable stuff. And remember, you know, this is my Yoldar Erk place, they do that, it's really great. Coffee cups now, they come in many different choices. You can even have them with paper lids now, which is great. And 50 billion of these a year, guys, that are being thrown away, 50 with a B billion. So I think we can try to remember to bring our reusable cups. I even got a cool one from Starbucks for my son that looks like a Starbucks cup, so he doesn't have to be embarrassed.
Thank you.
So, you know, there's things we can do to make it cool, to be green and reusable and be economically saving too. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Campagna. Cole Bazemore, followed by Artak Dal Dumian.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Kusakian, council members and staff. My name is Cole Bazemore. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of myself, as a consumer in the city, as someone who frequents many of these restaurants. I'm here to recommend the adoption of this ordinance and the new language. I believe there are a lot of great policies that staff have put together in this ordinance. We all understand the costs that our plastic products have on our environment. Many have already been identified, they fill our landfills, they pollute our waterways and oceans, and they continue our reliance on fossil fuels. So how do we address these problems? One is by requiring compostable foodware. I believe this is a huge step in the right direction. It reduces our reliance on fossil fuels. This foodware is compostable. This foodware is compostable, so it breaks down, doesn't pollute our waterways and oceans. And in many cases, like we've already heard, it's comparable in cost to plastics. I will say if we do consider proposing this or putting forward, moving forward with compostables, let's make sure that these products are in fact accepted in our green bins through Public Works. As I understand it now, those products may or may not be included, may not be included in the compostable green bin. Second, and more importantly, which has already been mentioned as well, is the importance of reusable foodware for in-person dining. This solves the problem of plastic waste and improves the situation for businesses. This reduces the amount of landfill-bound waste that they generate. It elevates the dining experience, and it saves money over time. There are upfront costs, of course, but over time, it can actually become less expensive. So I see that as a win-win. I do believe it's important to support businesses with this transition. If there's any technical assistance that can be provided by the city or even small grants to pay for things such as dishwashers and reusable products, that would go a long ways. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Artak Dal Dumyan, followed by Mike Mohill.
Good evening, council members. My name is Artak Dal Dumyan. I'm against this ordinance. I'm not only a restaurateur, I'm also a banker. I understand finances very well, and I believe you had your share of overregulation, overtaxation, all the, everything in your life has gone more expensive. I don't think anyone will, you know, reject that statement. But also, how many of you ever tried to negotiate purchasing these items from vendors? I don't know if anyone has done it. Try it. Try to see what the negotiation takes of you and what the price gouging is, especially when there's another next pandemic and supply chain disruption with China, Asia, or wherever else it's coming from. Most of this stuff is coming from not the United States, if you've done the research. I don't know. Do that if you haven't. So, and you see that what a small, you know, a change in geopolitics can do to the supply chain. What are we going to do? Start praying that it won't happen or start, you know, pleading the city? Don't you think we're already overburdened with overregulation and all the stuff that businessmen has to do? You know, by chance, I got into restaurant business, and by pure luck and finances and our personal abilities, we were able to stay in a business since 2019 pandemic and all the other stuff that has happened. But overregulating, you know, over and trying to put all that pressure on top of a businessperson that's already overwhelmed with all the stuff that's happening in this world, I think is unjust, and we shouldn't burden our businessmen again for these other issues. So I encourage you to, instead of just looking into websites, instead of just looking into some statistics here and there, look into in-depth. Have you purchased one? Have you negotiated? I've done so. And it's very hard, especially when you have two or three suppliers, and the statistics are this, statistics are that. Put your foot on the ground and try to purchase some of these items. Get them on your hands, see how well they work. Also, there was a great demonstration of different items that a lady brought over here, but try to get some of this stuff. I've tried it. Out of three or four of these items, they didn't work, so we have to abandon this, abandon that. It caused a whole lot of problems. And we are, as a business, as a prudent person and as a prudent businessman, we're trying to do everything to save the environment. I live in the city, I care about the city, and I will be in the city, so let's do stuff that really makes a difference and takes care of the city itself. Thank you.
Mike Mohill, followed by Craig Codwater.
Evening, council members. My name is Mike Mohill. I think everybody on both sides of the argument are environmentalists. True, isn't it? But one thing no one has said tonight, and I remember as a kid, when I used to work with my father in construction, he'd say, Mike, go out there and collect all the pop bottles. We'll get, you'll either get two or five cents each. And as a kid, I did that, and what did I do? I got, I took it to the market, and they gave me money for it. So why don't we take all this plastic we're all concerned about to a recycle center? And as much money you put in, the kid or myself will get money back for it. That's a different idea, different approach. Why should the burden be on the restaurant owner? It should not be. Has anybody in this room ever ran a business? I don't think so. This is government overreach again and again and again. Again, we're all for the environment, but you don't, you don't, you do not run a restaurant. You don't know, it's going to cost those people more money to operate. They've been through the pandemic. You sat down and you could afford to go to a restaurant or wherever you wanted to go, but they had a struggle. They were looking for government handouts that weren't there. And now you want them to have this burden. Shame on you. Let's, let's, let's bring in recyclable, like we do with paper and everything else. And as the kids pick up the plastic from the trash cans or wherever you want to put it, give them a reward. Because the way you have it set up, people are being fined, and oh, it's going to happen. Is that money, is it going to go into the city council or the city general fund as revenue? Earned revenue, just like the paper, you know, paper and plastic in the markets right now, that 10 cents or 20 cents each paper bag. Where does that 10 cents go? Doesn't go to the, doesn't go to the market, it goes to the government. In this case, City of Glendale. So I think we're looking at the wrong way. Again, we're all for the environment, but think of the businessman. He struggles every day as you just sit down and you have your eight-to-five job. You should be thankful that they opened their doors, that they're ambitious. They're more ambitious than I am. I couldn't do that at all. They make life easy for us, and you're going to make life difficult and burdensome. So please think about the restaurant owners. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Craig Codwater, followed by John Charles Meyer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members and staff. My name is Craig Codwalter, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Surfrider Foundation South Bay Chapter. And I strongly urge that you adopt this ordinance. And I track all the plastics ordinances in the state of California right now. My count is 159. And some of these ordinances have been in place for over a decade. And we've had them very similar to this in Manhattan Beach. It was supported by the Chamber of Commerce, supported by the Downtown Merchants Association, and it has saved businesses money. If you do the foodware accessories upon request, just by not automatically putting them in, you're saving money. If you do reusable foodware, there is documented case studies to show major savings for restaurants. Not only does the restaurant not have to buy the disposables, but it saves money at cleanup costs, it makes for a cleaner environment, higher standard of living, and we need to go from disposables to reusable. So I actually got this from Assemblymember Maritsuchi for speaking at an Earth Day event. I use it all the time. And this is allowed in the state of California by the California Retail Food Code. It was updated by AB 619, which allows customers to break these for reuse as long as they're clean and not damaged. And it's in the state law, so you're allowed to break them. We ought to switch to reusable and do away with the disposables. It really is a money-making thing for the businesses, and I track these all over the state, like I said. I have not found one vetted example of a restaurant going out of business because of any of these ordinances. And I literally track them all, and we can't find any evidence of that. What we can find is businesses making their customers happy because customers prefer going to a restaurant that is environmentally sensitive. So I think this is a plus for the city, plus for the businesses if they follow it. And we need a level playing field with strong violation penalties so that the bad people will do the same thing as the good. So I strongly urge you to adopt this, and I have all kinds of information I'm happy to share, but this is a win-win, and I strongly encourage you to go for it. Thank you.
Thank you. John Charles Meyer, followed by Damian Sullivan.
Hi, thank you for hearing me. My name is John Charles Meyer. I'm the executive director and founder of PlasticFreeRestaurants.org. We are a national 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We happen to be based in Glendale. I'm a Glendale resident. We have one mission, one sole purpose. We only do one thing. We eliminate single-use petroleum-based plastic from restaurants and schools by subsidizing the purchase of reusable foodware. That's all we do. We pay zero salaries, we pay zero rent. Our overhead costs are 5% or less for the last three years, and since our founding in 2020, we have eliminated more than 7 million pieces of plastic. Now, that sounds impressive. It is a number we're proud of. It's actually not that big a deal, and I'm going to tell you why. That represents 52 restaurants and 14 schools. I'm going to say that again. We thus far, in five states across the country, have subsidized foodware purchases, reusable foodware purchases, to replace single-use plastic at 52 restaurants and 14 schools. And that has eliminated 7 million plastic single-use items. So anybody telling you that this isn't going to make a big difference is not telling the truth. Our average impact is 110,000 pieces of plastic per year at a restaurant or a school. Nationwide, it's estimated that there are 1 million restaurants, there are 98,000 schools. I don't know how many restaurants and schools there are in Glendale, but I'm sure it's a heck of a lot more than the 52 restaurants and 14 schools we've subsidized so far. So with a stroke of a pen, you five could easily have a much, much, much bigger impact than my organization has in two and a half years of trying to do this. Not only do I encourage you to do that, but I feel as though you have the responsibility to your citizens to do that. Again, 7 million pieces of plastic from 52 restaurants and 14 schools. As has been mentioned a couple of times before, it has been documented time and time again that replacing single-use plastic with reusable foodware saves businesses money. If you don't believe me, please go to rethinkdisposable.org. It is not my organization, it's a partner nonprofit that we work with, rethinkdisposable.org. They have done three or four dozen case studies over the last 10 years for restaurants that have switched from single-use plastic to reusable and saved money after accounting for increased water usage, increased electricity usage, increased labor costs, and in some cases, increased infrastructure costs like the installation of new dishwashers. Every single one of them has saved money. I invite the restaurants that are here that are opposing this ordinance, if the ordinance does not pass, I invite you to contact us. We give away free money. We literally pay people to stop using plastic. Contact us, PlasticFreeRestaurants.org. The last thing I would say is, as much as I support this and we support this, we do believe that the fees should be higher. There just aren't enough teeth from a $200 fee for a restaurant that can be spending $3,000 a month on plastic forks. Thank you.
Thank you. Damian Sullivan, followed by Ramella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good to see you. Everybody, Alan, Paula, Aura, Dan, good to see all of you. I think I've stood up here several times in the past, and I have said that I am proud to live in Glendale. I think that we are a great city, and I think that part of being a great city is setting an example, staying with the times, and doing what other great cities are doing, getting consult with other great cities when you're doing something. I have seen, I think there's probably nobody in this room that doesn't believe that all of the initiatives we're talking about are not fantastic ideas. I totally, I agree with everyone, and I think that both of the people that have stood up in this room tonight, I've seen people that are restaurant owners and people that are absolutely environmentalists, I think both of them are telling the truth. I think that we are living in a challenging time. I think the devil is in the details. And when I say that, what I mean is, I do believe that the restaurant owner that stood here and said, you try and source these, how many of us have gone to a restaurant and seen a piece of paper and these times on the wall saying, sorry, we are out of ketchup packets, or we are out of this? I went to Carney's Hot Dogs in Studio City, and they were out of their main hot dog. I mean, we are having major different lives in the last several years in terms of the supply chains and what you can get and how much it costs and how much you have to pay to get it. And that's the reality that a lot of these restaurants do, I believe, live in. It is not easy if you are, if you, now, the Great White Hut, I do believe that, you know, the business impact that these, that trying to source, if you are a giant, giant organization like McDonald's, you can buy in bulk forks by the trillions, but you can't do that if you are one guy who owns one little hot dog stand. So what I am suggesting is that we be thoughtful in what we are trying to do. I think there's a lot of great things in what we're proposing to do, but I really think it's important to hear these people that have come here that want to be your partners. They're not saying we don't want to be your partner. They want, I think we should be their partners back and find that lifeline. Talk with other cities, all the people that does, find the right way. Maybe it's helping them find a large supply buy that they can all share the discount. I mean, there have to be ways that, finding people, and then I've seen these things about increasing the fines and then 100, 200, 300. If we become the Gestapo state on these people that are struggling to come back from the recession and COVID and the inflation, I mean, a lot of people go to the supermarket and they go, I just can't buy sandwich meat this week for my kids. I think we really have to take a hard look at how to be partners with everyone in our town so we achieve what we want to achieve together. So we just like kick all the tires and make sure we've just been thoughtful about what we do and how we do it. Thank you.
All right. Next is Ramella, followed by Armin Sahakian.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I tried to talk in Armenian.
Sure, you may. It is your right to do so.
Yes, I'm a Iranian. 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 I'm a Iranian.
Thank you. And Ramella, before we go to the telephone lines.
Yeah, I actually have a question for whoever can answer it. How do you want to deal with this colossal scope of plastic disposable products being used in house parties? I mean, you cannot imagine that, I mean, there are a lot of parties, I mean, colossal. So, yeah, I need some answer. How are you going to deal with that? So, and I have a solution for you, lady. Maybe people can bring their pots and pans to the, to the restaurant and take, and then take their takeout. Actually, that we, like in old days, that we would do that, we'd take pots to the restaurant and take, take our takeouts. And actually, another thing that I've noticed is your papers, they're too thick. So I don't know, it's not, I mean, against environmental standards or thing. And, yeah, basically, that's the, yeah, that's the, that's the thing I was to mention. And by the way, that's a very nice colored jacket that you're wearing, Ms. Allen.
Okay, thank you. Last card for Inside the Chamber is Alan Dish.
Hello, council. I just wanted to reiterate some things I heard. My attitude towards this is, in principle, yes, but, and I just want to highlight some of the buts. The idea is just that, okay, what I like is that this issue gets at to the heart of, let's call it, the American way of life. And I like that we're having this debate here in Glendale, which, okay, it's happened in other places, but a certain Ara Marc Desian, CEO of ServiceTitan, once called Glendale the center of the universe. So my point is just this, that disposability versus reusability, okay, we need to have this debate, but we should also take but we should also take very seriously what Mr. Mike Moorhill said and also the, I didn't get his name, sorry, the leader of PlasticFreeRestaurants.org. I mean, it's easy to dismiss this as kind of nonsensical, but are we ready to assume to the end what they're saying? Like, for example, with recycling plastics, like, that will require some huge democratic mobilization, militarization even, to the effect of, like, paying, I don't know, mobilizing young people, people in general, or even if we want to tackle seriously this issue of environment and waste. My last issue. My problem with this is it gets close to ideology, and we're all in ideology, but this idea of, let's say you criticize a big polluting company, and the typical ideologist would say, "But what did you do? Did you recycle all the Coke cans? Bless you. Did you put aside all the newspapers?" Like, in a way, what I'm afraid of is making this a personal issue. Of course, it's not. It's a collective issue. We're all responsible, from the smallest to the biggest, but especially the bigger. McDonald, name them. Who else is in this city? Costco and so on, Americana. Okay, I'm not trying to point fingers. My point is just this. This should not become some self-flagellating exercise of, "Oh, we need to pay more because we keep on polluting." We should first mobilize and also subsidize. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That accounts for about 45, almost close to 45 minutes of public comment from here within the chambers. And we have approximately, is it 15? 15 callers as well. So I will tell you this, that after about, we get into it for about five callers, we are no longer going to accept callers on this item. That is ample time for anyone watching to have gotten into queue. Now, if someone is in queue when they get dropped off, we'll take them if they call back. But I think that we have had ample opportunity to call in if you're interested, including people like Mr. Dish who got their card in at the last minute here in chambers. Let's go to the phones.
Our first caller is Mia Peterson. Mia, you're on air. You have three minutes. Mia Peterson? Okay, our next caller is Peter Baldassarian. Peter, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Hi, everyone. My name is Peter Baldassarian. I'm one of the operators of Massey's Kebab. We operate two restaurants in Glendale. And we've been in business in Glendale for, since the late '70s. And I just wanted to address a lot of great points. And I want to say to everybody there, I agree that, you know, the environment is always important. And I, as a, you know, citizen besides a business owner, take great measures to see if we can reduce, reuse, whatever we need to do. Personally, in my own life, you know, I've been totally on solar and electric vehicles since 2012, which people thought I was crazy since then. And I recently spoke at a packaging summit in Dallas in September. And I'm always looking for new technologies and trying to see if what they're saying really is real. And unfortunately, I want to say that a lot of this stuff that's coming is not here. Part of that, the answer I got while I was in Dallas, was, you know, there's so much backup of the existing stuff, just supply chain problems, that any new technology, any new replacement are months behind. And as I believe a couple of other restaurant owners have said, and I forgot the guy's name who mentioned the reality is, all of this stuff is available technically. And if you go to the UCLA study or if you go to any academic study, they'll tell you it's available. And it's, and it's, but once you want to source 500,000 of them or 100,000 of them, then automatically it's not available. Again, as someone mentioned, if you're McDonald's, that's done on a different level. You could even buy the packaging plant and source it yourself. But anything smaller than that, you're going to have problems. When you're looking at these kind of measures, it is impacting the lower end of the, I would say, the restaurant business, the restaurants that are serving the mass market, the quick service such as ourselves, who are not dine-in. Or in most cases, we are in either mall food courts or in this instance, we have mostly to-go, but we also have dine-in. And, you know, while building the stores, you try to, even the dining we built, we considered adding a dishwasher and having reusable, right? And it just gets, the practicality of it becomes very, very difficult. If anybody has ever built a store or built a business, they realize that even when you have a lot of space, every square inch, every square thing, there's hood issues. There's three compartment sink issues. So I asked that when you're doing these academic studies, and I know that you guys have reached out to people in the industry, to have a real discussion with them and to say, "Is all of this really available?" For instance, I can tell you in our food, our packaging requires high heat. It's not a burger. It's, our packaging is customized.
Mr. Baldassarian, you're out of time.
Mr. Baldassarian, if you can just conclude. I do want to hear from a restaurant.
Yeah, so it's very difficult when you're making these decisions and trying to apply it to a big group. I would suggest that the council start looking into this a little bit more, have more discussions, and then reevaluate whether it's feasible or not. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next.
Next is Gigi Garcia. Gigi, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Kusakian and city council members. I'm the vice president of the Montrose Shopping Park Association, which represents 180 merchants up in Montrose. The shopping park board has heard from several of the merchants in the last few days concerning the ordinance and has concerns regarding how it'll affect our local small businesses, especially those who, main source of businesses are to-go items, all which were a godsend during the pandemic, I might add. The MSA, excuse me, supports sustainability. However, the cost of products that you are requiring are much higher than the restaurants currently use. And for instance, I'll give you an example. One merchant found some combustible cutlery that was, that was a good price. And when they went to reorder it, it was no longer available and they were sold out. So my question, I guess, would be, it looks like there's a supply chain problem there. And what happens when they can't get that sustainable item back? Do they get fined after that? That is one question I would have. But moving on, the businesses in Montrose are all complying with the current rules of only offering cutlery upon request as the current rule states. They are all doing a great job. I eat out all the time up there. And they all have their signs posted. These restaurants are still being affected by skyrocketing costs of produce, eggs, gas, heat, and adjustments to the new minimum wage requirements that just went into effect. Implementing the ordinance at this time increases fees that would have a severe impact on our family-owned food establishment. We are asking council to leave the current ordinance as it is at this time. And we would like to participate and partner, as we always do with city, to get this information and educate our restaurants on how to move forward and help distribute information. We have never, the MSA has never received information to forward to our merchants. And it was actually a shock that this meeting was coming up today for several businesses. I myself am not a food business, but I did get plenty of phone calls from our food businesses. And, you know, so we would like to work together to partner with the city to get this information out and to educate our merchants. I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Next.
Thank you. Our next caller is Cory Grihova. You are on air and you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Hello, mayor and council members. My name is Cory Grihova. I'm owner of Pozolitos Mexican Restaurant in Montrose. I'm calling tonight to talk to you about the change in the plastic waste reduction ordinance. I agree that, yes, we all want to be as sustainable as possible. However, the cost of those products are much higher than the ones that we're currently using. A couple of examples would be a plastic cutlery pack. It costs about 14 cents a pack. And the compostable pack costs about 32 cents a pack. You look at plastic straws. It costs $31 for a case of 5,000 versus a compostable case of, at 4,800, straws is $133. It would be great if the city council could leave this ordinance as it is at this time or at the very least, take small steps towards the proposed changes and implement it in the future. At this time, we only offer straws and cutlery packs and condiments when requested as the ordinance calls for. Restaurants are climbing their way back from the events of the last few years and are still affected by supply chain problems. I rossed the prices of produce and now eggs, not to mention the increase in minimum wage. Please consider my words and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Our next caller is Melody. Melody, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Melody. I'm a, I'm a second-year student at Glendale Community College. I am not a Glendale resident. However, I do spend a lot of my free time here. I dine here. I get beverages here. My whole life is here. I have heard a lot of great points, but I'm here speaking against the ordinance. As a student, I firmly stand for a sustainable Glendale. I think all of us do. However, I do not think that this is the way to go about it. I don't think it's fair. I don't think it's an effective transition to sustainability, especially as we heard tonight in the midst of various crises. I feel like it'll unfairly impact our businesses, particularly the small ones. I also want to mention that I think the implementation of this ordinance will create consequences that will disproportionately impact our lower-income communities. I don't really think this has been discussed, but I don't think, I think not recognizing this kind of dissonance is wrong. And I think Glendale needs to listen to the local business owners that have spoken today. And I think the city council should build relationships with, you know, the lower and the working class to create a green Glendale on its community's terms. I think it's, you know, it's unacceptable for students or, you know, a lot of us as students are working jobs to, you know, keep up with our education and our lives. And I think that would be super unfair. I think it'll negatively affect our community. So I think there's a reason why all our business owners are standing against this ordinance. And I think we should, you know, listen to them and recognize who it will affect and how. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next caller is Natalie Hovanisian. You are on air. You have three minutes.
Hello, everyone. My name is Natalie Hovanisian. I hope you're all doing well. I just wanted to quickly state my concerns with this policy. While I strongly believe that we should take any necessary steps towards reducing plastic, I personally believe that this is really impractical. As a Glendale resident, I have many friends who oppose this idea as well. All of these cents that we're going to be spending are going to add up and many people are not willing to pay for it. I also know that people do not carry their reusable cups and utensils everywhere they go to avoid this cost. Also, if we do bring our own reusable cups, would that not violate health policies in restaurants and cafes to take the cup and place it into their store? I would suggest to think of and initiate other steps towards plastic waste reduction. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next caller is Catherine Irka. Catherine, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Kusakian, members of city council. I urge you to support the ordinance. And I really can't improve on the remarkable comments with visual aids, no less, that you've heard tonight. I do understand that business owners are nervous and the outreach component is critical. But the speaker who works to make restaurants plastic-free gives the lie to the idea that this is a small change and won't make much of a difference. Think of every single coffee place, every place that serves takeout in Glendale. This decision probably should not have been, have to be made at the local level, but that's where we are. I have comments on the fine schedule. I ask you to adopt the second alternative. A $300 annual maximum in fines is a cost of doing business annoyance, not a serious penalty. And anyone inclined to be a bad actor would have no incentive to change their way of doing business. I understand the need for exemptions, but it's very difficult to tell how they would be granted. Having a chat with staff is kind of fuzzy. Perhaps exemptions could be revisited after each year as conditions change and a report could be made to council a year after implementation to review how many exemptions were requested, how many given, and for what reasons. I know that COVID impacts are still front of mind, but I do want to remind council that Glendale is unusually generous to business owners. We do not have an annual business tax. There's a trivial fee, I think it's $50 a year, that was approved a decade ago just so staff could keep track of what businesses are in Glendale. Business owners pay a lot more to do business in other cities. I'm not objecting to this situation, and of course, it affects more than food service. But it may be worth keeping in mind when thinking about additional costs. But the main thing, though, is to keep in mind the powerful benefits to the environment and to the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next caller is Danielle Limon. Danielle, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Hi, yes, my name is Danielle Limon and I'm a resident of the Woodbury neighborhood of Glendale. And I am calling in support of the ordinance reducing single-use plastic in restaurants. And as a consumer, I actually do base a lot of my choices on the types of practices that a restaurant uses and whether or not they offer more sustainable options for their containers, whether they offer, if they offer sit-down, whether they use real silverware and plates as opposed to disposable ones. And another thing that I wanted to mention is the issue that we're talking about, the education piece. And I do actually carry my reusable cup with me. And many places I've still gone to and they tell me that I'm not allowed to use it, whereas it's my understanding that actually legally I can use it. So, you know, that's a place where the business could be saving money, but they're not allowing me to use my cup. So I think that's just one of the examples of, like, the education being a really important piece of this and that I think the businesses want to do more sustainable practices, but the concern is about the financial piece. So I think that needs to be addressed through the education piece. And I hope that we can all come to the same page on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Jessica Hovanisian. Jessica, you're on air. You have three minutes. Jessica Hovanisian? Our next caller is Alina Lazarian. Alina, you're on air. You have three minutes. Alina?
Yes, hi.
Go ahead.
So I think that this policy will lead to more contamination and that is a big hazard. And also the rising cost of going out with this will discourage people from going to restaurants to eat. I don't see myself carrying my own utensils to go and eat in a restaurant when they can provide their own. I think there are better ways for the plastic waste. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Our next caller is Karen Catcher. Karen, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Hello, yeah, good evening, everybody. Thank you for this wonderful plastic ordinance, this step forward in the right direction. I believe that we, as adults, have a huge responsibility in showing, being good role models and stewards for our planet and show the next generation and our children how to live responsibly. There was a time before plastics were available and everybody survived and proudly took their own dishes and had food filled in there. And all it needs is of getting used to planning ahead. Again, to pack a lunch and/or bring a container if you know you're gonna want to have a sandwich or get something from somewhere. Just bring, bring a plate, bring your things. It's not that complicated. And I believe that we all need to learn to take responsibility again, plan ahead, and make decisions that are going to turn around the future for... again, plan ahead, and make decisions that are going to turn around the future for our children. And I have visited beaches with dead animals, with plastics in their stomachs and their mouths, and rings around their bodies. It's so sad. It is unbelievable to see the trash and the dead animals. I see it in the environment when we go hiking in and around Glendale. It's just incredible how much waste there is everywhere we go, and we pick it up and put it in trash cans that are often overfilling. I'm so surprised that even Target, and this is outside of the plastic ordinance for restaurants, but that then not even recycling bins for paper and/or other materials. And I know that 92% of the recyclables are not being recycled. They end up in the landfill, and only really plastic bottles get picked out from those waste separators. I'm German, and I grew up in Germany where people used to give tokens. Like, everybody's used to get a Stein or something, and then they pay, or like $5 or something, and then they would get that money back when they return it. And sometimes people would drive home with a container that belongs to a restaurant, and the next time they go there, they present that cup again or that plate, and they get their money back. So it's not that complicated. It just requires us to think ahead. Thank you so much, and I urge you to vote yes and consider the GEC suggests this fine that's increased, so to make a stand and take it seriously. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next caller is Jackie Echo. Jackie, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Thank you for addressing this, Mayor and City Council. I support this ordinance. I believe this is less of an environmental issue and moreover, a children's health issue. Microplastics are currently everywhere. A lot of people have no idea. They're even in our babies, human breast milk, our fish, our birds, our air, our water, et cetera. It's everywhere. It's disgusting. According to our government agency, the National Institutes of Health, the interaction of microplastics with humans can produce cytotoxicity in our cells, hypersensitivity, unwanted immune responses, and acute responses like hemolysis, which is the rupture or destruction of human red blood cells. We are a coastal city, Los Angeles. Glendale's part of Los Angeles. We must respect that even for our sea life alone, we must use biodegradable carryout boxes and utensils. Seeing beautiful sea turtles swimming around with plastic straws permanently stuck in their noses, or strangling, poisoning them, and countless other dolphins, whales, fish, it's a disgrace, to say the least. I see plastic litter everywhere in Glendale. And I understand, I respect, and I have compassion for our restaurant owners. I believe that if it is that difficult for them financially, I wonder if we can, and I'm wondering, can we take a closer look at our city budget? Can we somehow compensate businesses for these costs? I know there's a lot of great companies out there that have bamboo products and other reliable environmental alternatives that might cost a little bit more, but I think our health is worth it because microplastics are poisoning us. They shouldn't be in our babies. It's horrendous. I also think that businesses can also offer financial incentives to customers using reusable cups. And I also, I think it would be really great if we could also try to educate the people of Glendale as to, you know, our storm drains. I'm sorry, I don't, I was told that catch basins are catching all the litter. I don't think it's catching all the litter. That goes right into the Pacific Ocean, and I've seen a catch basin. Generally, they're a net. A net is not going to catch a straw or a plastic fork, per se. So I think we could, you know, talk about some of these items, and maybe really have even amendments to this ordinance proposal that would help to compensate businesses if this is really a big concern for them. Our taxes are enormous, so I think that we could work on that budget. My name is Jackie Echo. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Mia Peterson. Mia, you're on air. You have three minutes. Mia Peterson? Yeah, our next caller is Aram Makertichian. Aram, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Hello, everybody. Thanks for providing this opportunity to speak. I want to let the council and the people know that I oppose this ordinance. It's a normal burden to citizens, and it's an ineffective solution, honestly, charging customers, and also business owners are going to take the more burden on them. Firstly, the fee would be unnecessary for already struggling families, and I've noticed the cost of living is already going up, and we already have the highest tax in the state, one of the highest taxes in the state, and it just keeps on rising with these minimal taxes that we add to people. It's just, this would be a regressive measure that would impact low-income households as well. Why are we charging money, why are we always thinking of charging money to consumers when there's other ways to do it? I feel like if the city collected a billion dollars, this problem would still linger on. I would be still drinking the same coffee cup and throwing it away. I remember a little time ago, when it was during COVID, I took my reusable cups to those coffee, and they refused to take my reusable cup, and it was a health concern for that. So I don't know how this is going to work with restaurants. I hope there's a different way. I do support it in a way, but if it's going to cost the consumers even more, I honestly do not support it. The city has different ordinances. I mean, I was at a friend's house the other day. They're telling me it took a year and a half to install solar in the house, and they can't even consume all the solar energy for free because of all the ordinances in the city. If the city really cared about people, even the solar panels would be an effective way to save the environment, but there's still an increase against it. So if there's another way to take care of this, I would support it. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Our next caller is Andrea Hazrian. Andrea, you're on air. You have three minutes. Okay, our next caller is Ani Gafarian. Ani, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Ani, and I am a small business owner in Glendale. I own a restaurant, and we're fairly new. I am all for the environment, but like the other woman was saying, we used to, before plastic came over, we used to use everything reusable, but those days are over. In those days, people were not in always rush like this. Nobody has the time to take their reusable stuff to buy something, first of all. Second of all, because of COVID, we do not allow our employment, employers to use and touch anybody's reusable cup because of COVID. I am for the environment, but we don't have resources. Second of all, we cannot charge people more money to use biodegradable cups or straws or forks. Already, people are complaining that everything is very expensive. It's very hard for small businesses to survive in this economy. Rents are very high. Everything is very expensive, and food is going higher and higher every day. We don't have the resources. We don't have the education. I myself don't like the biodegraded straws. When I drink something, I taste the paper. Nothing tastes the same without. So if you, I mean, we should have maybe trash cans everywhere on the street so people don't waste, put the waste on the street. Maybe they can throw, I don't see anywhere trash cans on the street. Maybe if we do that, people will not throw everything on the street. I don't know. We can't charge more money for people. Already, people are suffering. So maybe we can educate business owners on something else, how to do, but I'm against this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next caller is Jessica Hovanisian. Jessica, you're on air. You have three minutes. Jessica Hovanisian? Okay, I'm gonna call Mia one last time. Mia, Mia Peterson, you're on air. You have three minutes. Mia Peterson?
Okay.
Okay. Andrea Hazrian, you're on air. You have three minutes. Jessica Hovanisian, you're on air. You have three minutes. Jessica Hovanisian?
Right, that's it. Okay, that concludes the public comment portion on this item. Congratulations to all of you who are still here. Let's now move on to council questions and comments. Who would like to go first? Well, Councilmember Asatian, I know you were waiting. Would you like to?
Yeah, I have some questions, and then maybe we can ask our questions and then go into comments. So I'm the one that connected Mr. Ossian to Mr. Jones because I was having this conversation and excited for the opportunities that we have. I think the red flag went up for me when I was on the email chain. I was under the impression with the presentation that was given to us that we, the city, have lists of our own with comparable prices that are available for us to switch out. The email did have a link to what I considered the abyss. It was just, you know, a bunch of distributors. There were no pricing points on there. And then the UCLA paper was mentioned. You know, when I think about how we work with our small businesses and helping them, I'm not picturing a link going to them as the resource that they need. So, Mr. Jones, can you please clarify for me what we have on hand, aside from that link in-house now? And I have a bunch of comments, but I want us to go through questions first, so.
So are you talking about what research we have access to or what products we have access to?
So I can't point to a research for my small businesses, so I'm asking for what lists do we actually have? What resources, aside from research, do we have that are tangible, practical things that we can hand and work with our small businesses to find out, you know, how, what they're using now, and if that product is available for it to be switched over? Do we have that?
Councilmember Asatian, thank you very much for asking that question. The reason when we wrote the ordinance, we suggested that it doesn't begin immediately is because if city council chooses to adopt this ordinance, that will provide staff the opportunity to resource up, to make sure that information is available for those small businesses. The information that I sent to those businesses inquiring was information, again, as you said, about the Luskin Study, which is the study we referenced when we were writing the ordinance and preparing the ordinance, to understand what the impact would be to businesses for plastic waste reductions. The information I sent you, or sent the query regarding distributors and suppliers, as mentioned, that is a growing list, and if the restaurants utilize that and go to speed or connect with those distributors or suppliers for those goods and services, they will find that information. As mentioned, if the ordinance is adopted, staff will make sure that we develop the resource page, the resource information required, so that those small businesses are able to have the information for them to comply with the ordinance.
Okay. Do you know when that UCLA study was done?
Twenty twenty, I believe.
Pre-COVID, post-COVID?
February 5th, 2020.
Twenty twenty, yes, thank you.
So it's not taking into account inflation? Not taking account? Okay.
That is the most comprehensive study we have to date on this issue.
I will have to make a note about the outreach on this. I took a look at the survey that, you know, you guys sent out to the restaurants. The survey wasn't a nice gesture, but it didn't indicate that there's an ordinance coming. So it was basically collecting data, and so unless there was some other letter or notice that went out saying we are working on a specific ordinance that I missed, can you confirm that?
Councilmember Asatian, so when we issued the survey, we indicated that the city is looking at expanding the plastic wastes and plastic waste prohibitions. So we got, designed the survey with specific questions to get the responses from those people responding to the survey regarding those parts of the ordinance that we were thinking about.
And I know I have the answer, but I think it'd be worthwhile for others to hear. How many people or how many businesses responded to that survey?
So we had an under a 10% response rate to the survey.
Thank you. Mayor, maybe we can go through questions and then?
Sure. Anyone else have any questions? Councilmember Njerian and Councilmember Brott?
Question. So in the ordinance, Mr. Jones, you're talking about a, let's see. There is a economic hardship exemption, and there'll be an application. Who's going to be hearing that exemption application? The Sustainability Commission?
I don't think that exemption process would go through the commission or any commission. I think there would be staff who would be reviewing any of those exemptions that come in and then discussing that with the business owners.
So it'll be a back-and-forth kind of thing with them? Like a planning, like the planning department does with plans and projects?
So we would have an online exemption process, so the person requesting the exemption would write why they want the exemption and why they think that they deserve or why they think that the exemption process is regarding their businesses. Then we will take that information, and we will discuss that with the business owners, and we look for evidence, and ask them to provide us evidence maybe, and then we make a determination.
So have we set and developed the standard by which an exemption would be granted?
Councilmember Njerian, we have not developed to set that standard. Again, that is something that we will do during the 180-day process between the adoption of the ordinance and when the ordinance potentially takes effect.
Is that, do you envision that something, that is something the council would weigh in on, or would that be just a staff?
We, I think council have asked us to bring back a report to them 90 days after the adoption of the ordinance regarding the effectiveness of any outreach that we are doing. At that time, we could bring a report back, at the same time, bring a report back to council detailing the exemption process for council input.
Okay. Because clearly, depending on where you set your standard, it could be mildly inconvenient, somewhat inconvenient, majorly inconvenient, and that would certainly, you know, where you set the bar for exemption would be critical. Also, if it's staff of your office, if it's like a group thing where you, as the head of the department, feel that no exemption should be granted, that certainly would be influential on your, let's say, I know you don't have a big office now, but you have Elizabeth, and that's it? Okay, I mean, so, I mean, is Elizabeth going to go toe-to-toe with you and say, no, you're wrong, mister, they should get an exemption? So I think there's issues as to how we set this whole, we're setting up a judicial branch of this. So let's think about that. I'm not sure where we're going to go today, but if we get to this point, I think we need to think about how we're structuring it and to make sure that there is due process, that there is fairness, that there's impartiality, that there's not any undue influence, that there's certain standards, evidentiary standards. So it's a big thing. I mean, this whole application process is a lot more than just a line on our report, just so everyone realizes that as we think about the process. Thank you.
Councilmember Brottman, and then Councilmember DeNai.
Yeah, I want to get into the cost a little bit because that seems to be, you know, the major concern is the cost burden on restaurants and, you know, on consumers if it gets passed on. And it was Mr., was it Mr. Pagosian? And it was Mr., was it Mr. Pagosian who spoke at the beginning? Mentioned forks in particular, mentioned 30 cent price differential, I think. Anyway, we have some people here and I was wondering if I could ask Mr. Meyer, who does the plastic-free restaurants? Because he is in the process of, I mean, his business or his nonprofit subsidizes restaurants. So, he would, I think, have a good visibility into the cost of the items that are being purchased, that are compostable because they're directly providing a subsidy. Would that be okay to ask him? Yeah, ask him to come up and maybe speak to this?
You may invite Mr. Meyer to come up, but only to direct specific questions to him. I'm not inclined to give the podium to anyone to just continue the discussion at this hour, given we have a couple more items.
Yeah, my specific question is, what is your experience with the price differentials on these items? Forks is one example, but maybe you can address some others. How much are you having to subsidize to make people whole?
There's a little bit of a misconception here because what you're talking, sorry, there's a little bit of a misconception here because what you're asking about, I believe, or what you're talking about is compostables. We don't subsidize compostables, we subsidize reusables.
I see.
We subsidize reusables that replace single-use plastic or compostables containing PFAS. State law as of a few weeks ago, I believe, has outlawed foodware with PFAS. So, in theory, that shouldn't be an issue anymore anyway. But in other states, we will subsidize replacement of PFAS-containing compostables. PFAS is a horrible, horrible chemical, it's contained in a lot of compostables.
Okay, my mistake.
So, compostables, I mean, I can speak to the price differences a little bit, but we don't subsidize them, so it's not something I deal with directly.
Okay, never mind then, thanks. Maybe then Mr. Jones could speak to this because that has come up. I know we have looked at these price differences. And one of the reasons why, I guess, it was, it's now maybe a year and a half, two years ago that we implemented a ban on single-use plastics for our own city operations was that we could get experience. So, what is our own experience with purchasing these items as compared to what we were purchasing in the past?
Thank you, Councilmember Brockman. So, yes, so we did an analysis and this is a research analysis, a secondary, not a primary research, a secondary research analysis. So, we took those items that this ordinance would pertain to. So, that would be utensils, straws, stirrers, nine-inch plates, 12-ounce bowls, platters, trays, et cetera, et cetera. What we found is indeed some of those items, the alternative to polystyrene do cost more. On the other hand, some of those items, the alternative to polystyrene, cost less. So, there's a mix of these products. So, for example, a utensil wrap set of 1,000, a polystyrene set for 1,000 would cost roughly $66. Non-plastic, non-PFAS-free or PFAS-free alternative would cost $100 for that same 1,000. So, probably a cost difference of 0.03 cents per item. I understand that those cost differences have to be adjusted and have to be taken into account by the businesses. But the research that we have looked at and that we have read indicate that the cost differential of plastic foodware items is not detrimental to those businesses, whether they're smaller businesses or larger businesses. I am not a business owner, so I don't know. So, I had to rely on the research to come up those figures. As regards the city's own ordinance regarding marine-degradable foodware used for city events and everything, we have worked with a warehouse to buy those items, to source those items in for use by staff. Through that process, again, some of those items have cost more, some of those items have cost less. I have not done the analysis on that, but overall, it has not been a large financial burden to the city to make sure that we comply of our own ordinance.
Okay. Because this really is a key question, I think. Now, one idea that Jennifer Pinkerton mentioned to me is something called cooperative purchasing where potentially the city, I guess, or some organization could negotiate prices for common items, provide a list and allow our restaurants to kind of take advantage of purchasing power through the city or some other organization. I know she knows a bit about that. I don't know the details, but I wonder if you know anything about that? If you've thought about whether that's something that we might be able to do in order to make sure that the product is available or that, you know, at least, or the pricing is as competitive as it can possibly be, especially for the smaller, the smaller operators.
Councilmember Brockman, yes, that is something that has been brought up to us. I know there'll be some, I don't know the legalities around that regarding what the city's involvement is, but I know there is circumstances where cities have assisted in bringing suppliers together. So, there is some, through, purchasing through, what's the word I'm looking for?
Cooperative.
Cooperative, thank you very much. And bringing many people to one supplier that can get the cost down. So, that is something that we could investigate. I don't know where it has taken place before, but I know that the city can do that. But there are some legal issues and we're not quite sure what those legal issues are in terms of what the city can do and can't do in those cooperative purchasing agreements. But there are.
If we do go ahead, you know, I hope we do, but if we do go ahead, I would like, I would like us to look into this to see whether there's any opportunities for us to help the businesses in that way. I guess the last thing is, you know, we're certainly not the first city doing this. There have been many, many cities, I forget what the number was that was given us, 160 cities around California that have done variations of what we're doing here. Some near to us, some that have done pretty comprehensive ordinances, like I believe Culver City. What do we know about the experiences of these cities that have adopted these ordinances? The kinds of, the numbers of requests for exceptions that have been submitted? And the impact, if any, to the businesses? What have you, what feedback have we heard from those experiences?
So, Councilmember Brockman, again, thank you for the question. So, we've reached out to a number of cities who have adopted some ordinances. We reached out basically in two ways. Reached out first of all regarding the 25-cent cup charge because we wanted to understand how businesses and how that went down in communities. The information that's been provided back to us is that it hasn't been, hasn't really affected the way people go around purchasing their drinks. Once the education is done and people understand why there's a 25-cent cup charge, and again, that money accrues back, accrues back to the businesses. In terms of the polystyrene ban, in terms of alternative foodwares that meet compostable and recycling standards, the information that has been provided to us and the questions that we have our cities is that as far as they're concerned, it has not impacted their business communities. They have not had applications for undue financial hardship to make sure that they comply with the ordinance. So, yeah, based on that feedback, we think that the same will apply to here in Glendale, that businesses will be able to accommodate this ordinance. I think one of the reasons that maybe we suggest that there is this timeline between the adoption of the ordinance and the ordinance coming into effect is so businesses can plan for this change. So, it makes it, so it impacts their operations in the least amount.
Thank you. All right. Who would like to, anyone have questions besides the ones that have been asked so far? Okay. If not, so, city of Los Angeles, what are they on track to do? Do we have any indication of where the county of Los Angeles is headed with this, Mr. Jones?
If you give me one second.
I know folks from the audience are itching to the opportunity, but I'm going to defer to staff.
So, the Los, the county of Los Angeles has recently passed a plastics ordinance and their ordinance consists of... Sorry. I don't want to get this wrong, so.
Well, while you're looking that up, I also have a question regarding, I think that there was a point brought up about the study that was used that was pre-COVID. And then one of the speakers said that, you know, indicated that none of us had been in the shoes of an individual who's had to negotiate for these. I'm assuming we haven't done that yet either, right? No one has actually gone on the phone, tried to see what was the availability of these materials? That we could potentially tell businesses to use as substitute items, right?
That is correct.
We've done, excuse me, we've done it ourselves for our own operations. Shouldn't we know from our own experience?
So, for our own operations, we have not had issues. We've managed to buy the compliant products and store them in a warehouse. We bought a minimum of 2,000 items of each product, so cups, plates, bowls and everything that are utilized. But again, I don't know the financials, but I just know that we have been able to purchase those items. We have been able to stock a warehouse with those items. So, staff have been able to utilize those items to make sure that they are compliant with that.
The reason for my question is not to poke holes in anyone's, to try and discount. I mean, I know that someone, one of our speakers said that you need to go off of facts, you need to go off of actual numbers. And, you know, there are actual numbers and figures we can speak about when it comes to the harm that a lot of these products cause the environment, how long it takes for items to decompose and biodegrade. I think some estimations say that styrofoam can stay in landfills for up to 500 years, if not thousands of years. Actually, and I'll tell you, this is scientific research, that the only way it breaks down is through sunlight. And if you're putting it in a landfill and you're covering it up with dirt, it just extends the life of these harmful chemicals and materials. But, you know, I also want to make sure that the numbers that we're talking about as to what the city has done, and I know we've said we won't ask anyone to do something that we don't do ourselves, but it's different than the volumes that some of these businesses are operating in. So, we need to, we need to make sure that we cross all the Ts, dot all the Is before we tell folks that this is what we are expecting them to do. Obviously, I ask about Los Angeles and LA County as well because much like everything else, we are sort of in a small boat, being towed behind greater economic forces by the second-largest city in the United States neighboring us, the, one of the largest counties in the country in which we exist. And so, there is certain inevitability in terms of the direction that we're headed in, no matter how much we want to resist some of these important trends. So, those are basically the questions I have now. I don't want to go into any more of my comments, although I think I've already dipped my toe in that. Who would like to go first in terms of comments? Councilmember Asatyan, go ahead.
I usually try to keep my comments brief, but Mayor, if you'll allow me today. So, after the January 10th meeting, and I understand that Councilmember Najarian and Divine weren't present when this item first, or last time it came up. You know, I wanted to do the sensible thing because I believe in us going green. I wasn't okay with the outreach, but I have to tell you, as I was driving home, I had a pit in my stomach because I knew that we hadn't done our due diligence on this. So, the next day, I reviewed the materials again and thought to myself that we were sitting in a room and on our own, without having conversations with our coffee shops, with our restaurants, with our bakeries, we were making a decision for them without understanding their operations and how this would affect them. This is the industry that is slowly maybe coming up for air since the beginning of the pandemic. I, for one, have never operated a restaurant, food or beverage business. I don't know what it took. We can't consider ourselves a business-friendly city and supporters of small businesses by making decisions with our partners. And those partners are our small businesses. So, I started dialing because I needed to learn. I called the restaurant, coffee shop and bakery owners I knew to learn about their process, the products they use, if they've attempted to switch over to biodegradable products, if they even knew that we're discussing such an ordinance. On Sunday night, I took a walk down Brand Boulevard and decided going to the restaurants and talked to the owners and managers to inquire whether they also knew this ordinance was up for consideration or coming for a vote tonight. Last night, I did the same in my own neighborhood late at night for the restaurants that remained open. At this point, I've talked to roughly 40 establishments in the last week, and this is what I've learned. I've also actually reached out to the Downtown Association and Montrose Park Association. Not a single business or an association representing businesses that is going to be impacted by this ordinance was aware that this was coming tonight before my call and walk-in. Not a single business owner was against working with the city to see where they can go green. Almost all said they needed one-on-one sit-downs to go through what they currently use and have someone show them comparable items and prices to what they use now and confirm that they are actually available. All of them said that inflation was killing them. One of the restaurants said a box that cost him 45 cents now costs 75 cents. All of them said they have supply chain issues and staffing issues. In the midst of my conversation with one of them, the owner actually interrupted me and said, "If you're close by, come by, I'm short three cooks, I need to get on the grill." So, I actually drove over to look at his plastic materials. I offered to cover the grill, he said he couldn't take that up as an offer. All of them noted serious concerns about biodegradable products being too expensive or not being available for the products they currently use. All of them noted serious concerns about 25-cent disposable cup charge. Some noted that they had the biggest margins on the drinks. And with the 25-cent cup charge, with the inflation, is going to deter people. Others noted they wouldn't simply be able to take on that reusable cup because of health concerns. People with money won't care and they'll pay. This will, in my opinion, hit the low-income communities that are struggling. I also reached out to our council, one of our council members in Burbank to learn about what they've done. My understanding is that a couple of years ago, they wanted to start this initiative. They put a hefty amount behind education and said that they would revisit it after they had the responses from their residents. I have a copy of the materials that they prepared and that original ordinance I'm happy to share with staff. I also, yesterday, met with LA Council President Paul Krikorian, during which time I brought up this ordinance and said we would be looking to them for assistance and resources. He connected me with his sustainability staffer, who also shared last minute many items that they have. What Los Angeles actually has in place is not anywhere close to what we're suggesting. And by looking at the timeline of the things that they have passed, every time before they actually passed an ordinance, they spend about two years doing education and outreach. I wholeheartedly support the intent of this ordinance, which is for us to go green and reduce waste. I believe we, as a council, all agree on the same end goal. Passing an ordinance, then going and telling our businesses that we passed an ordinance and they have to comply is not partnership. It's what we see come out of Sacramento a lot. So, I'm asking my colleagues to consider some alternatives to passing the ordinance tonight to reach that common end goal that we all have. So, here's where I'm at. I'm ready to separate out the city facilities and events portion in this ordinance and bring it back for a separate vote. We can move quickly on this. I don't know if we need 180. I don't know if we need 180 days to educate ourselves or our contractors, but, you know, that, I would leave that up for discussion. I think it would be worthwhile because I have heard certain concerns that whatever inventory we have and that we're going to use, perhaps, you know, one of the community members brought up a great idea for us to put up signs with, with those plastic items or whatever is not biodegradable, to note that we're using the last of it and maybe put on a QR code that sends them off to get educated about how they can reduce waste. So I'm invested in this, and I think we should actually hire an hourly worker whose sole job is to work with our food and beverage providers for the next 180 days and help them make changes where they can, and then come back with data of what's actually available and doable. And then we can draft an ordinance based on practical things that work for both sides. I'm also open to looking at meaningful incentive programs to help our small businesses that, to make that transition. We should be partnering with our small businesses, not making decisions without understanding their operations and what's doable and what's not. I'm absolutely opposed to investing dollars into enforcement or requiring exemptions or waivers. I think this is how we actually ended up with the mess we had with the codes in our building and safety, where it takes two to four years to get approval for renovations. If we have money to invest, we should be investing it to support our small businesses. This afternoon, we actually agreed to move forward in hosting events for Small Business Week. I think this would be a great opportunity for us to have one of those events be a networking opportunity with our food and beverage providers, where we also bring in the organizations that are helping move to a greener space, where we maybe even bring in samples of these products and use this, that, that particular event to help transition. I looked at the, the next steps for public information and outreach. I think that if I was able to personally hit 40 restaurants in a week and a half, going door-to-door, I think the biggest component that's missing from your education recommendation is that door-to-door outreach. When we talk about outreach, I'm not talking about flyers. I'm not talking about a website that people have to go find. I'm talking about a true partnership with our restaurants. So there are organizations that, that can help bring those resources together and those lists together. So I think that, that this person specifically needs to be a community outreach person and not a sustainability person, and they work with our restaurants in helping them transition. Some of the products I've looked at, I, I understand nothing from this. So the, the small business owner would tell me, "Well, this isn't available because this is, this is the purpose this particular item serves, and it is not available in biodegradable form." So if there is, and it's comparable, let's help them switch over. So I'd like to hear what my colleagues have to say about this, and I hope we can come to an agreement tonight.
Okay. Who would like to go next? Well, Councilmember Najarian, and then I'll, I'll, Councilmember Bravman.
So. My first comment is on the process. I don't think it was proper, two weeks ago, for this item to be introduced without 40% of the council, council member, Divine, and myself, without us not being present. I think it has been said, "Well, we were just introducing the ordinance." Well, at that time, two weeks ago, we could have had this discussion. And the problem that I see is this was a well-in-advance, noticed absence for both of us, but the meeting went forward on its own without us. I think these are a lot of the comments that I would have made. I know that Councilmember Asaturian was, was raising some of these issues two weeks ago, but certainly I would have joined in, and I think it would have been a much better to delay it, because what we had was an ordinance that was introduced. And it certainly gives the impression to those who were supporting the ordinance that here we are, you're going to vote on this tonight. And, and suggestions such as additional outreach, the way the outreach should be done, how the sourcing should be obtained, could be seen as just stall tactics. And that is not at all what's going on here. These are legitimate concerns that I would have joined with on January 10th at this meeting, and perhaps staff would have gone out and gotten us a little more information rather than having it here for a vote up or down today. I don't think there was enough, enough outreach. I don't think that the vast majority, you said 10% success in the surveys, that means 90% fail rate, or ignoring rate. That's, that's just not acceptable. There's no way we can impose restrictions on our small businesses with that sort of dismal response rate. So the idea of having a dedicated worker, outreach worker, hourly or whatever, makes sense so that these restaurant owners know what is coming down the pike, and not just to inform them, but to get feedback from them as to what their issues are. And some, you know, some may be 100% in favor of it. Others say, "I've got sourcing issues." Others would say, "I'm on a margin that's so slim, I can't afford to lose any customers by charging the extra 25 cents a cup," or whatever the particular issue may be. We did get, in the last few days, we got letters from the DGA, we got letters from the Montrose Shopping Park, we got letters from other businesses. And I suspect that that's probably a result of the outreach that Councilmember Asaturian did, if I'm not mistaken, because they were not, they weren't unaware.
Look, everyone that came, and actually, a lot of business owners that weren't here today, is because they're either on the grill or unable to leave the restaurant. So every single one of the folks that came out here that was a restaurant knew because I personally reached out to them.
That's what I'm saying.
That is just, it's unacceptable to me.
Yeah, so that's, so we, we need to solve that particular process issue, is that when we make a decision as a council, we should have at least an informed target group that is going to be affected by any ordinance. The, the environmental support groups clearly are very well organized, and they, they know about these things, like, like no problem. There's action alerts going out, and we have representatives from different industries, and the Surf Rider Foundation and all that. But, you know, Glendale doesn't have a Restaurant Owners Association, I don't think. I don't know where the Chamber of Commerce has been. I, I mean, shame on the Chamber of Commerce. This is something that the Chamber of Commerce should have been partnering with us, not to advocate necessarily, but to inform their membership and their restaurants as to what's going on. DGA is doing a better job. Montrose, I think, is doing a good job. Let's let everyone know what we're, what we're doing. My mom, 89-year-old mom says, "All right, you better vote for this thing because I'm tired of seeing all the plastic around." And she's right. But we have to look at the other side. We need to bring the community with us as we do this. I also have some concerns about the whole exemption process that I sort of asked you questions about. I think we really need to nail that down. At some point, we're going to have a, have some sort of ordinance and some sort of appeals process or exemption process. Make sure that that is a little bit more clear, so we know what needs to be done and what levels of standards, a burden of proof, or inconvenience are necessary. I'd like to see the extra outreach. I'd really like to consider this once I am comfortable knowing that the affected businesses, individuals, industry has been aware of it, has given us feedback. Maybe at that time, we can solve some of those issues. There were suggestions of a cooperative buying program. There's been suggestions that this is now becoming more and more available as time goes on. I think these things will clear up. So I'd like to see at least, I don't know, what did you say, 180 days return with a report?
I, I would like a report, and then I, I really want there to be data on really what's available for us to look at this ordinance language again, because I don't want to put things in there that just don't exist in reality or are not doable in reality. I want it to be practical.
So that's where, that's where, I'm, I'm very close to the, the thoughts and the remarks that Ms. Asaturian has made.
Okay. Councilmember Bravman, let me go to Councilmember Divine, and I'll have you go after.
I can apologize, Mayor Kasakian. Before Councilmember Divine gets an opportunity to speak and deliberate, may I make a couple of comments?
About what I said?
No.
Okay, if it's a no, then it's a no.
It's a, let me just go to Councilmember Divine, and then, and then we'll have you. Do you want to? All right, go ahead. Councilmember Galanion, I mean, Councilmember Galanion, City Manager Galanion shows you how late the hour is and that I need more coffee. City Manager Galanion.
Thank you so much, Mayor Kasakian. Just wanted to make a couple of comments, and I was hoping that Mr. Jones doesn't take the brunt of these comments and doesn't take it personally. As you all know, he's, he has been a one-man shop for a long time, until recently that we hired an assistant who has primarily been involved in social media and advertising and sustainability efforts and education. Mr. Jones's intention was an outreach effort, a comprehensive outreach effort after the adoption of the ordinance, but prior to implementation of enforcement actions. We agree, we could have done more outreach, but as, as you can imagine, with the limited resources we have, that wouldn't have been possible. Councilmember Najarian mentioned, we, in the past, have relied on the Chamber of Commerce to relay these messages. We have regular meetings with the board. We inform them, inform them of the important items that council will consider. We have a future list of agenda items that will come forward to council, and more specifically, those that will have a significant impact on their members. So instead of going door-to-door, and instead of having to connect with these restaurants or any establishment that will be affected by any ordinances that this council passes, again, we rely on those chambers. And for some reason, obviously, the, the memberships, especially food and beverage establishments, have not been informed. As far as agendizing the item for introduction, I take full responsibility for that. It wasn't intentional back in November.
Mayor, I'm glad, okay, I'm glad you took, you took blame for that.
Yeah, Mr. Jones had nothing to do with it. It's, it's like a chess game. Every Wednesday morning, we get together with the executive team, as you know, and we go over a, a long list of items that will have to come forward to council, and we do our best so that we don't have long nights like tonight. And you are correct, you are right. You had given me the advance notice that you will be out of state. However, we thought, again, maybe mistakenly, that this is just introduction. And additionally, back in November of 2022, not making any excuses, but we did bring this item forward to council. You had deliberations, you gave directions, and we made some adjustments to the ordinance that was introduced on January 10th. Again, not making excuses, we could have done a better job, but I take full responsibility for that.
I accept your apology, Mr. Jones.
All right, well, and, and during my comments, I'm not going to let Mr. Galanion take full responsibility or Mr. Jones. I'll acknowledge my role in trying to, as best we can, manage the calendar to get through as much items as we possibly can. It wasn't done with nefarious intent, just merely in the hope of trying to address as many issues at, at the pace with which my colleagues and I bring them up to staff's attention. Councilmember Divine, and then Councilmember Bravman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jones, for, for this report, for answering all the questions that you've been plummeted by. I think we all have to understand that there are just two of you, you and Elizabeth. And I was laughing, told the mayor when we talked about the cooperative purchase, and I said, "Yeah, you and Elizabeth can, can start to negotiate, right, small staff." To me, the question tonight is, do we want to do it the right way? I'm sorry, do we want to do it right now, or do we want to do it the right way? And I think the answer to that, as far as I'm concerned, is we want to do it the right way. Mr. Jones, in his defense, he did admit that he was, what did he say? That he felt that the outreach was ineffective. As I understand, also what he said was that the chamber was just recently notified about this. Yet, of course, they might not have had time to, not that I'm making excuses for them, but they may not have had time to respond or to get feedback from their, their organization. But hopefully, in the future, we'll get that. So I think, you know, we have to reevaluate this. I think there's more research to be done, especially on the availability of products, the cost, the supply chain. There are so many questions that remain unanswered. Of course, I was lobbied to vote for this ordinance, but I told the person that I was talking to, I said, "You know, I can't make a decision without knowing what everybody or the most people think about the ordinance, or how they're going to be impacted." And I don't think I have that information. I don't think any of us feel that we have that information at this point. I think that's something that we need to know. I think whether we, we get this, these answers by going door-to-door, or whether we have the, the small business event, have a special session on just this, I think that might be a way to go. But we do need to continue to look at this. I hope that we can, you know, get the businesses on board, because we all want, we're all for the environment, we're all for sustainability, we all want to get rid of plastics, and we will. But we have to get the businesses on board, and I think we need to take a breath. I think we have to talk to them. I think we have to either bring back this ordinance, a similar one, or a revised ordinance in the near future. So that, that's where I stand. Again, thank you for all the work that you've, you've done so far, and I suppose we're going to, to have you do more work as well. So I look forward to the, the research and the information, data that we get in the future, and that's where I stand. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, my turn.
Councilmember Bravman.
I see where this is going. I, I am disappointed in our process, maybe for different reasons. We, we did discuss this at council several times, and I think it was in November, is that right, Mr. Galanion, in November? The ordinance was presented to us in substantially the same form we're seeing it today. And we had a vote, and four of us were in support, and Councilmember Najarian said he was only voting against it because of the cup charge. So I thought we did have a consensus, and that is why, when this came for the introduction of the ordinance, and the two of you were not here, I didn't, personally, it didn't strike me as, as a problem, because we had already had, I thought, a very full discussion. Now, having said that, I think the experience that Councilmember Asaturian had doing the door-to-door is, is very eye-opening, in, for no other reason than it, it just shows what's possible. And, and as we go forward, does it sound like we're going to adopt the ordinance today? I would have preferred we adopt it and then do that outreach and education and, and, and provide, you know, resources. My hope was... My hope was that when we do that, we would do this kind of very intensive door-to-door engagement. That's still what I would prefer. I mean, this problem of plastics pollution is something that has been, you know, weighing on me for many years. I've wanted to do this from the day I came on council almost three years ago. I wanted us to do it ourselves first, so that we could get the experience. We did that. We let over a year go by. Then we did the skip-the-stuff ordinance. I thought step-by-step was the way to do it, and this was now going to kind of wrap up all the other pieces. So I am obviously frustrated. I, I would still encourage my colleagues to adopt the ordinance and then do the outreach. If there is not support for that, and it looks like there isn't, I would, I would ask that we, that we move ahead with three components. Because there are three components that are very, like, low-hanging fruit, many, many cities have done them. In fact, many cities have done them years and years ago. And that is the, the ban on polystyrene, which really is the bottom feeder. And prices of polystyrene, I'm told, have gone up, so I think that's not going to be an economic impact. The second one is the stirs, straws, and utensils, which is also something that many, many cities have done. Those products are there. I think those two elements, plus the beverage bottle for the city operations, I think those three, to me, are, are very standard. I would like to see us adopt those three components, do the intensive outreach, come back after 90 days to talk about how that outreach has been going. And the other components of this, the, what is it, the foodware on premises, the cup charge, and the disposable foodware standards, let's come back, I'd rather not wait 180 days, but let's come back in 90 days. And, and when we look at the outreach that we've done for those three components that we adopt today, then we can consider those additional three items at that time. That would be my request of my colleagues. So today, three items, 90 days, come back, look at the rest of it, look at our outreach, and take it from there.
Okay, I'll, I'll make my comments, and I'll try to be as brief as I can. And while I make them, I would suggest that my colleagues, someone among my colleagues tries to come up or craft a way to move forward on this item, so we can move ahead and go on to the other items after we take a vote to see where council is. I'll, first of all, take responsibility for the scheduling of this. I hope no one watching this thinks that there was anything weird, underhanded, nefarious about how we scheduled it. As has been mentioned, we've had these discussions quite a few times. We've put sustainability as one of the top priorities of this council. This has been something that we've gone back and forth on, and sure, in some regards, in terms of outreach, certainly, we've missed the mark, but I, I don't think we should be deterred from our goal of eliminating harmful chemical products from the environment. The United States is one of the top producers of plastic waste in the world. I think we're 4% of the global population, and we produce almost 20%, or at least 17% of plastic waste worldwide. And this is not something that is sustainable. We have to all do our part, as difficult as it may be. And I appreciate the comments from both sides. I certainly learned a lot listening to folks over the last few days, telephone conversations of concerned people on both sides of this, emails, texts, those of you who came in and have sat through the meeting and who called in. But you know, it's also, there's, there's definitely hyperbole on both sides, and I don't know, you know, I don't think that hyperbole is ill-intended, but there is. For those who said that, well, if you can afford to eat out, then you can afford the additional cost, whatever it may be. You know, really, that depends. That's not really the case. There are a lot of folks for whom eating out is not necessarily a choice that they make, but a necessity. We live in a area, a region with plenty of food deserts, with folks who do not have access to healthy options, and eating out and fast food sometimes may be one of the few options. That doesn't necessarily make the availability of those plastic products there any better, but we can't be dismissive of the choices that people are faced with, especially in an evening when we discussed the prevalence of unhoused population and individuals who may not have the accessibility to some of these reusable products that we, the rest of us, may. At the same time, there was, I believe, a caller who said, well, why don't we just put out more trashcans, as though trashcans are the issue? Trashcans aren't the issue. As much as I would love to see more trashcans, especially in certain parts of the city, I think therein is, you know, we're missing the mark, right? More trashcans produces more trash. You know, I already explained earlier how the plastic doesn't, you know, decompose when it's covered. That is, I think, the epitome of trying to put a Band-Aid on a bullet wound. It is not the problem. The problem is the plastic that's in the environment, that gets into our ocean, that gets into the soil and contaminates it even during decomposition. So I, I would like to see us move forward with this, even if it's with a slight delay, because I do feel that the trends are going that way. But I would like also to see us, as has been mentioned, do better outreach. If Councilmember Satrian can reach out to 40 businesses, I'm, I'm certain we can find a way to do it with staff as stretched thin as we are. You know, there was a caller, Mr. Bagdasarian, the proprietors of Massey's Kebab. I really liked what Mr. Peter Bagdasarian said. You know, he goes to these, they're a large operation. You know, we talked earlier about small businesses. They're a small business that has become a big business with many locations, and they, he goes to these events to try and find alternative packing materials or packaging or whatever it is to provide services to their customers. And I don't think anyone wants to malign our restaurateurs. These are folks that are providing an essential service. They're providing a great service to the community, feeding members of our community. And, you know, they're, obviously, they have gone through a difficult time through COVID. At the same time, we have to look towards the future. There is a clock working against us. We're not alone in this. We need to do our part. So I would suggest that my colleagues consider some ways forward. I would support a ban on polystyrene. I think styrofoam is a terrible scourge on our communities, our landfills, our trash. I don't think it provides necessarily, I mean, there's plenty of alternatives to it. But I am open to seeing what my colleagues say, with the hopeful goal of eventually getting to where we all need to get to, which is the banning of plastics. Councilmember Satrian, please.
Councilmember Brotman, I know how important this item is, and I share in your end goal. I think that us doing this and actually putting money behind it, at the end of this journey, it's, it's going to get us to a better place of actually going green versus passing an ordinance, and then collecting fees from our, our small businesses and restaurants. I think with your recommendations, one of, you know, one of the things off, out of the gate I said was, I don't want us to wait on the city, anything that's in this ordinance that pertains to us leading the way. And so I'm happy to, I don't know if the city attorney needs to redraft that, even if you bring it next week, I would be open for us to pass it now, pass it next week, but do you need to rewrite that portion?
Yes, Members of the City Council, Councilmember Satrian, I'm just looking at the sections here. So the components that have been called into question are the, for retention are the prohibition on the use and distribution of polystyrene, that's located in one, that was one that was mentioned. So there are some discrete components of this, and based on the discussion that I've heard so far, I think we would need to bring it back, depending on the direction that we're provided, whether it's we're keeping three of them and removing the disposable, disposable foodware recycling standards, or the cup charge. Those things would need to be stripped out. So I think what you're saying is correct. We couldn't do it on the fly here as well as we should, because there were also questions raised about the specificity of exemptions. And to the extent you decide that, you give us direction that you want to adopt some components of it, and there's an exemption process involved for that, that would need to be fleshed out a little further, is my understanding of what I've heard so far.
Perhaps to my colleagues, then. So my thought process on this is that we need to go to the restaurants first, and then pass anything that's outside of our city services and events. And so I'd like to hear if, if there is support for that, that we, we just put a hold on the whole thing except the city, then I can make the, I can make the motion.
Mr. Mayor, may I? Before Councilmember Satrian makes the motion, just wanted to make a couple of clarifying points regarding outreach and hiring of personnel. Unfortunately, as you heard, we don't have the resources to have staff go door to door. And seeing, I think one of you, it was Councilmember Satrian, mentioned, this really should be coordinated with our economic development staff as opposed to our sustainability office. They will obviously work hand in hand. They need to come up with a plan. And in our opinion, 90 days is not enough. It's going to take at least two to three weeks, maybe a month, to find the appropriate person to be able to do this. We have a hiring process we need to go through, we have the onboarding, then we have to come up with a plan, the material. This, this outreach, extensive outreach effort cannot happen overnight. So I would highly urge you to consider a 180-day window for this comprehensive outreach to, to make it meaningful, so that when we bring it back to council, we have a good set of data that we can share with council, and then not ask for an extension, because we haven't been able to accomplish what the council had directed for us to do.
If I might.
Councilmember Brotman.
So I, I can see where the sentiment is, and if, you know, I agree, let's, you know, I'd rather do it right than just do it for the sake of doing it. What's the other term I, I've heard? There's never a wrong time to do the right thing. I think I've, I think that's your quote. That's from you.
I don't know, I think it may have been M.L.K. I think it may have been Martin Luther King, but.
Never the wrong time to do that. Never the wrong time to do the right thing. But anyway, if that's, if that's the consensus to go through an outreach process, education process, feedback process, and then come back in 180 days, back to where we are now to adopt an ordinance, what I would ask is that we don't then put 180 days on that ordinance's effective date. In other words, I don't want us to spend half a year, pass an ordinance, and then it doesn't go into effect for another half a year. If we've done all the outreach, and we come back six months from now, and we pass the ordinance, it should go into effect right away. That's, that's what I would hope, because then we're not losing time, but we are getting it right.
Councilmember Brotman, I'd only say, depending on how that ordinance is shaped after the fact-finding and outreach, right? Because one of the issues that has come up, and I've heard, is about, you know, some, some of the restaurateurs I've spoken to who are eager to do the right thing, they say, look, we want to do this, but there's, we're dealing with serious supply chain issues and constraints, and we hear that there's issues even with natural gas prices fluctuating. A lot changes, I understand that. My suggestion would be, like, 180 days is okay, but to me, it feels a little long. I would rather have that, I say up to 180 days, but anywhere between 120 and 150, roughly four to five months. If we can do that, we should be able to do it within that time. Six months is already half a year, then we go into another year, and it gets delayed. But I do appreciate the process and understand that there is hiring, there's obviously labor shortages. Finding the right people who want to do this and who can do it effectively can be challenging, so I'm willing to give that. I just don't want us to give us this indefinite 180 days and then have it just last out there. So I would say anywhere between 120 to 180 days. But the sooner you can come back with findings, the better. We obviously have gone, started on that road already with this evening.
Yeah, well, and I just think that that's a decision, Councilmember Brotman, that we can make when the ordinance comes back, if we want to extend, you know, give them 180 days upfront, or if we just want to go ahead and, and approve the ordinance.
Right, I understand. I'm basically just kind of setting an expectation, you know, to say that I hope we're not pushing this thing out another year. Because this is, we have a real problem. We need to address this problem. We all know that. So I want to do it right. I, I think we're all in the same place. We all want to do it right, but I also don't want to delay it unnecessarily. So let's find a middle ground.
Should we say 120 to 180 days?
Sure.
Okay. So should I make the motion?
You certainly may.
So I'll move to not adopt the ordinance, and then direct staff to hire a community outreach person that will conduct 120 to 180-day outreach with our restaurants, food beverage providers. Do I need to list all this stuff?
Mayor Kasakian, I'm a City Council, Councilmember Satrian, again, another clarification. If it's council's desire to conduct 120 days of outreach, that means, let's say, you know, four months of outreach, we'll need two months of the process, so that, that makes the six-month period that I talked about.
Here's what I would suggest. I think that this adoption in its current iteration, this ordinance is not going to be adopted in its current iteration. I think that everyone can read the room and, and understand that. You've heard from council, we've raised concerns, and we also are giving some direction. My question to our legal counsel and to the city manager is, do you need specific direction, or are you comfortable with what you have heard to be able to start the process of bringing someone onboard to then go out, conduct the, you know, door-to-door retail versus wholesale outreach and information collecting, as well as education as to what's coming? Because I think that we can all agree that we are going to pass some type of ban in some iteration. I see a lot of heads nodding. Do you need specific motion, or is this enough direction that you're receiving from council?
Mayor Kasakian, if, if the direction is for the outreach to start as soon as possible, I believe we have enough direction, clear direction, as what the intention of the council is. As far as the language in the ordinance is concerned, we need more specificity, and we'll have to come back at some later point, because I heard that there's, there may be a desire to divide up the ordinance, adopt portions of it, separate the city-related functions and events. So we can definitely, based on those comments, bring a, another report back and make sure that we have covered the, the points that you have raised.
Councilmember Satrian.
Do you need, do we need to approve a financial dollar to this today, or do you need to bring a report back for you to be able to hire this person?
Councilmember Satrian, we don't have a resolution of appropriation, so technically, we cannot, we cannot use funds in any of the, our accounts, because it hasn't been adopted by council. So potentially, we can bring back an item with what Ms. Van Miden had mentioned, and based on your direction, rough calculation for six months of outreach, we're looking at about $30,000, so.
Which is well within your discretion directly to spend a city manager.
Right.
So I think that you have direction from council. We would like, I think, to have a report back, and it could be informational staff report as to how things are going. If you are okay with coming back within three months to give us an update as to where we stand, how we have done with hiring, whether we have someone onboard, and you have a battle plan moving forward, and if everyone's okay with that, we can do that. And then, in terms of, there are components of this that Councilmember Brotman brought up, which I think, I do think that we should revisit sooner than that, and perhaps that's the items that he separated out, and I'd be inclined to second that for discussion, especially ones as they relate to city facilities. Is there agreement on that?
I'm wholeheartedly in support of this, anything with the city facility. I'm wholeheartedly in support of this, anything with the city facilities. So that's the only one, though. Not the other two.
So what you're saying, because I identified three things. One is the polystyrene, the other is the utensils and straws and stirs, the third one is the bottles, or the beverage containers. Clearly, we're not doing anything today. But what you're saying is, those three items come back sooner than the other items.
You can come back. I would like to see something come back. And I know that we've now put a lot on staff's plate, but within three months to bring them back, I don't expect them to be brought back as one package. I would like to see each of them brought back. They can be on the same report, but separated out for us to be able to take action on those items, which I think would be reasonable enough to do.
But included in that is the fine schedule, which we haven't discussed. Included in that is the exemption policy and procedure, which we haven't discussed. So I would need to see, even though I agree in concept with those issues, we've got some other pieces that I need to see a little bit more clearly. I'm not for unlimited fines. I mean, in case someone asks me. I'm for a very clear process on the exemption hearings.
So we're okay with that? With that coming back within three months?
I'm sorry, Mayor Kasakian, members of the council. So the question is, should what comes back apply on a citywide basis, or only to city events and facilities?
Well, there are three parts to it, what Councilmember Brotman mentioned. The first two would be citywide, the last one would be city-specific.
Yeah. And that would be the B component of that particular section, which we could do. That's on the disposable cups. And we'd only adopt the single-use beverage restriction for city employees, facilities, and events. Yeah.
We are bringing that back separately, right? Like, as separate ordinances? They're not going to be mixed into one?
No. They will be brought back as three specific items. We can vote on them.
The straw, stirs. My issue here is, the straws, the stirs, that portion of it falls into the data that we need while talking to our restaurants. So if we are in agreement that we need to do the outreach first, anything dealing with our small businesses, then we should only be bringing back something that only applies to us. And then, when the data's there, and I really want hard data, so I want to be able to tell staff, send me who exactly you contacted and what the situation was with each. So it's not this, like, you know, 10% of people responded, don't know who those people are, just concrete details.
That's what we, Mr. Mayor, and members of council, Councilmember Sartian, that's what we need to put in the battle plan. And that's going to take some time to put together.
All right. I don't want to belabor the point, because if that, for styrofoam, I think we need to come back sooner rather than later. But I don't know, do we want to take a vote as to who is being in favor of bringing back styrofoam city facilities? Do you want to hold off on the stirs?
If that's what it takes. If I could get a majority, then.
And is anyone here against the bringing back of styrofoam sooner rather than later? We're talking about styrofoam, folks. It's, no?
I'm good.
Bringing back for consideration? So styrofoam, yes, within three months. City facilities, taking lead on the single-use plastic bottles and single-use bottles, will hold off on the stirs and the straws and whatever else. So with that, I think you have enough direction? Yes, Ms. Van Miden?
Yes. And because the styrofoam would apply citywide, we will have to take a look at the fine schedule and exemptions at that time as well. Thank you.
Yes. All right. With that, I think we are ready to move on to the next item.
Do we need a vote?
Do we need a vote on this?
So I think we have to adopt alternative three, which is to not adopt the ordinance, right?
Not necessarily.
Is it alternative four?
It's not required. I think the city managers indicated that we have clear direction, in which we've just summarized on what it is that you'd like to see us bring back.
Okay. All right. The best-laid plans of mice and men, folks. Yeah. So we'll be back on this item. Next item, Clerk Abadjan.
Next item is community development regarding adoption of ordinance, amending Title 30, Chapter 30.26, advertising signage overlay zone, ASOS relating to expanding and further defining the number and types of signs permitted in the ASOS and other miscellaneous text amendments. Adoption of ordinance, adopting a first amendment to the 2020 Development Agreement in accordance with Glendale Municipal Code, Chapter 30.26.100, for ASOS non-accessory signs and sign structures and animated signs and sign structures. Divine 12, introduced by Divine 12132022, one ordinance amending Title 30 to ordinance adopting a first amendment to the 2020 Development Agreement with the Americana Edbrand LLC.
All right. Mr. Calvert, illuminate us.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My apologies, trying to get the setup. This was introduced just a couple of weeks ago. This is to amend the agreement with the Americana. The idea here is to expand over all their digital signage. Just to add on to a couple of comments, I know some questions came up regarding things like brightness and other elements. Those cannot be any brighter than they are currently today, so that stays governed how it is. But otherwise, this is just to expand the overall number of digital signs allowed within the development.
Okay. May one like to ask questions or move for adoption, or lambast me for scheduling this for a time when folks were not here? Yes, who would like to second it?
I'll second it.
All right. For the record, this was brought at the same time as the last one.
Mr. Kasakian, just for your information, this was introduced by Councilmember Divine.
Oh, was it? Okay, all right. Well, then, in that case, let's move forward. May we have a roll? May we have a roll call?
Yes. Councilmembers Asatrian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Najanyan?
Yes.
Mayor Kasakian?
Yes. All right. Can you please read the next item into the record?
Next are hearings, a public works regarding solid waste collection rates, one resolution adopting the restructuring and increase of solid waste collection rates.
Okay. So again, this was something also that we wanted to bring back at a time when we had a full council. And I just want to read some of my comments based on information that I think will be important for my colleagues to hear, and then to see where the council stands on this. So as many of you have heard and read, and as was presented by staff, we need to maintain what we refer to as a positive fund balance in refuse funds during the course of the proposed multi-year rate plan. As it appears, that's necessary for the proposed rate increase to go into effect February 1st, 2023, and continue through June 30th, 2023, at which time, rates would once again have to be adjusted on July 1st, 2023, and at the beginning of July in 2024, 2025, 2026, and 2027. That was the charts that we saw during the time when we had this discussion. Now, while I recognize, and my council colleagues recognize, the need for a rate adjustment is necessary to maintain a solvent solid waste disposal operation, the impact of two rate increases within five months apart imposes, I believe, a difficult challenge for our residents. This body and staff have received emails, letters, phone calls regarding concerns, and through the protest letters received by the city, as well as the members of the public who directly came to these chambers and voiced their concerns at the council meeting. So as such, I call upon my colleagues on this council to continue this item and direct city staff to restructure the rate adjustments for the first increase to take effect on July 1st, 2023, with the understanding that the new proposed rate structure would have to be recalculated to accommodate the new term. Again, that is not to move forward with this immediate rate increase in February, but to push it to July and see how we can restructure it. In doing so, members of the public will be afforded a greater period to plan for potential rate changes five months from now. But furthermore, a five-month delay will afford the city staff the opportunity to identify appropriate funding sources through the city's annual budget preparation process and develop plans for potential implementation of a discount program, which we've talked about, for seniors and low-income families or those in need, as has already been discussed by my colleagues on this dais. I want you to all be assured that staff is going to continue to engage members of the public in this process through the mailing of a new Prop 2018 notification, as well as further opportunities to address the city council at a future public hearing. So that is my suggestion. If my colleagues would support that, to, yes, Mr. Golanian.
Yes, thank you for that direction, or recommendation for that direction. Mayor Kasakian, just a point of clarification again, that the public hearing last time was not closed, and I believe we have three cards for speakers on this item. So if you indulge those speakers to hear them, and then we'll ask for deliberations and direction.
Thank you. We have three cards, no callers. Let us first hear from Alan Dish, then Mike Mohill, then Richard Lee. You'll have three minutes each.
Counsel, good evening. I'm here today dressed in the kind of baggy style reminiscent of trash with the plea that we must love trash. Loving trash means sending it off properly to its final resting place. After all, what we all have in common, no, not death, trash precisely. We create trash, waste, garbage, to use the French term, excrement, and so on. Where does it go? Not my problem, is my point. And I will be extremely brutal and naive here, but would you really want to live in a society where you have to debate every afternoon how we distribute water, how you handle children's education? No. I would like to live in a society where there's an efficient anonymous machinery that simply handles all of this in the background: food, water, healthcare, electricity supply, and education. And I can live my life, read books, watch good movies. Or let me put it this way, of course, maybe we should raise the prices, but it should be done in a pragmatic way, progressively and slowly. I want to second the mayor's announcement that he just made about delaying this. I mean, some of these numbers were astronomical. Mr. Brotman, you mentioned this a couple of weeks ago, and that's what was messing everyone up. So another thing, and with this I will conclude, I think it's a bit ridiculous, what happened here in the last 13 years, and being very sincere, but also that I want an investigation launched. And I want an investigation launched into why this was not handled properly. I mean, the rates increased gradually, and I'm going to speak to some attorneys about it. So again, it's a bit obscene, dare I say trashy. It reeks in here, and it's not coming from me. And I think, again, all my point is this, that we need to not think of this as a technical problem, like restructuring and so on. No, this is a properly political and economic problem. How many people participated in the last elections? And we're going to get those 40,000 signatures, if that's what it takes. Mark my words. Because you guys put a loophole in this thing, and I don't know what you've awakened, but you've awakened something. And I will pick it even in front of the Americana, if that's what it takes. I don't even like going there anymore. Every time I go try to play the piano, they don't let me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dish. Mr. Mohill, followed by Richard Lee.
Why are you starting to cough? I haven't started talking yet. Thank you, appreciate it. That was reset. Okay.
Let me just ask a point of clarification to Ms. Van Miden. If individuals spoke at the last public hearing on this item, are they allowed to speak again? Is it the chair's discretion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think it's at the chair's discretion at this point, given that there's additional information that was provided in terms of the process.
All right. Mr. Mohill, you may proceed.
Thank you, Captain Mayor. There's only three of us who want to speak.
I understand. It was just trying to make sure that we're following the rules and we're doing everything by the book. Go ahead.
Fair enough. Good evening, council members. My name is Mike Mohill. First, I'd like to know how many people, can the city clerk's office tell us how many people submitted a request that this thing be canceled?
You're talking about letters of protest or communications of protest?
Yes. How many did we receive?
Mr. Agrover? Does anyone have that figure?
We have somewhere around 820.
820.
820. Appreciate that comment. That's a lot of work to get that many signatures, as you know. Lot of work, lot of work. You know, the question really is that being raised by other people, not by myself, is why did it take this long to say we need a rate increase? How about a rate increase every year, gradual? You know, when it comes to electric and water rates, you do it every couple of years. But you don't wait 15 years or whatever it is right now. You look like fools. And I know you're not foolish. After all, you're on council, I'm not. So, okay? But having said that, listen, listen to the residents. They're hurting right now. They just got their gas bill. And that's political. And that'll be discussed in my newsletter that's going out this week. Why the rate increase? It's politics. Okay? Is this going to be political also, this rate increase? It should never have been like this. It should have been every year or every two years, 5%, 10%. But not this whopping hit somebody over the head. You wonder why people are leaving Glendale. Here's one reason, or the state of California, that's another reason. The high cost of living in Glendale, the state of California. You're driving out retirees every day. This is another reason why we need to think of this rate increase. People can handle a rate increase gradual. Hey, in work, when they give you a promotion, is it gradual or right away? Takes time. Same thing here. People know rates go up, costs go up, fuel goes up. We accept that. But not a sledgehammer. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Good evening, Mayor Kasakian, council members and staff. I know the hour is late, so I'll keep my comments very brief. I really have basically four issues to mention. First off is, of course, the slap in the face, quadrupling, quintupling of the sanitation rates and the possible impact on the elderly of Glendale. Another item is the fact that it's been my experience, especially over the last three weeks, that many residents of Glendale were not aware of this proposed rate hike. And in spite of the information that has been sent out to the residents and the homeowners, I found that it was actually very few that were even acquainted with it. So for some reason, the information was not recognized, not read, discarded. And so I took it upon myself to put it out there, and I put it out on the Nextdoor social website, and also wrote to our Glendale news press. And I got tremendous amount of feedback, and the feedback was largely negative. And I would say the negative to the extent of perhaps over 90%, possibly even much greater than that. So, and my final point is, and I don't have a basis for knowing other than just a knows. I have been an accountant for 55 years, and I looked at the COSO report, and I saw some wild gyrations, especially in the assumptions for what would take place without the rate increase. And so the only thought that I had there is that perhaps it would be nice to have a second report that perhaps could be generated by a second report that perhaps could be generated by an independent party, as opposed to a party that was hired by the city of Glendale. And that's all I have. Thank you very much for listening.
All right, thank you. We have callers?
We have two callers.
All right, let's listen to the callers.
Our first caller is Michael Klein. Michael, you're on air, you have three minutes.
Thank you, council members. Mayor, I agree with your proposal to move this to another date. I think that the independent report really does an excellent job justifying why the rates need to be raised. I'm just very concerned on behalf of the citizens of how big this first raise is going to be. I read something, point of 85%, and I think in this economy, that's very difficult for the residents to absorb. I also think that the council should be held accountable for the fact that because rates haven't been increased since 2010, that they have put us in this position. And I think the city should absorb some of the cost to make it much easier for residents to take on these rate hikes. I think, especially keeping in mind the current economy that we are in, I just found out about this myself. A neighbor knocked on my door, and she gave me a printout from Nextdoor website, and I read it, and I read the review from the independent review, and, you know, I came to my conclusion. But I mean, I found out about this literally yesterday. So I think more notice needs to go out to residents, and you guys do a great job on a lot of other things, but I don't think you've done a great job on notifying residents on this issue. So I appreciate the mayor's decision to move this to a later date and notify more people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller.
Thank you. Our next caller is Grant Michaels. Grant, you're on air, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, council and staff. My name is Grant Michaels. I'm the president of the Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council. I'm following up on the comment letters that we submitted, and was looking forward to more information that would be provided by staff tonight, as we obviously are very interested in this issue. Our goal is to have the rates for solid waste be transparent, understood, and accepted by the residents. That is our goal. We do understand that costs are going up, and a rate increase is justified. But we want to see a cost justification for that, so that it can be understood and predicted. I will raise one issue that was not raised previously at the hearing or addressed, and that is the issue of the franchise tax, or the franchise hauling for commercial accounts. That was listed as a reasoning for a loss of revenue. With someone who, as someone who has experience with both commercial and residential accounts, I do know that my personal account is paying franchise fees. My hauler is charging me franchise fees that they are paying to the city. In reviewing the COSA, there was no mention of that revenue. I would like a clear explanation of how that is being recorded, put into the budget, and factored into the analysis. I appreciate your decision to take this seriously and spend the time to do it right, and look forward for more information coming from the city. Thank you.
Okay. That is the last caller on this item, and I think that some questions have been raised. Hopefully, when we come back and we bring this back for further discussion, we will answer as well in regards to the franchise fees, what our overall financials are as it relates to waste hauling. Any comments or?
Mayor Kosakian, if there are any comments or callers may want to close the public hearing.
We'll close the public hearing at 9:35. Yes, Councilmember Brodmann, and then Councilmember.
Yeah, I had some questions in the briefing, and since we're moving this to, what, out six months, how long are we pushing this out?
Mayor Kosakian, member of City Council, Councilmember Brodmann, if you agree with the mayor's suggestion, then we will bring an item back with the adjusted rate structure, because now, again, directed by council, instead of having an adjustment February 1st and then another one July 1st, we'll just consolidate the two, and it will go into effect July 1st. So potentially, we can come back with a report in May to make you and the public aware of the new rates, and then have a public hearing in June for it to go into effect July 1st.
Okay. So when it does, and that makes sense, but just to be clear, when this does come back, I mean, we still have the revenue requirement that we need to make up. So when it does come back, if we're pushing these increases later on, costs are building up, that just means those numbers are going to be higher than what people are seeing today. So that should just be something that the public understands. But one thing, in the briefing, I asked for some information, and hopefully, before we, you know, or when it comes back, we can get answers to the, you know, the significant factors that are driving this, these increased costs. It was mentioned, you know, recycling markets, the commercial franchise program, the landfill closure SB 1383, and just overall wage growth and industry costs. I'd really like to see analysis which breaks those out and gives us a sense of what's really driving the cost increase. How much, you know, is one of these really major, and some other ones are minor? So that is definitely something I'd like to see. And some of the other major assumptions is, as, you know, Mr. Michael said, I mean, I think part of it is people just want to have a better sense of what are the assumptions that are going into this? Are they believable? Are they trustworthy? Do they make sense? You know, we need to, we need to show that. So I hope we can get that. That was one thing. You want to comment on that?
Yes, Councilmember Brodmann, definitely, we can include those items. Staff had already done some research, but I think it'll make more sense once we have our consultant, Mr. Davis, is always, also here, has been primarily the brains behind this fee structure and adjustments, and he will crunch some more numbers, and definitely will include those items. Like I said, we have done some research. We were, we were ready to make a presentation, but I think it will make more sense when we come back with a report. We'll do that.
The other thing is, a few people have written, you've probably all seen these kinds of questions, you know, can we do pickups every other week? You know, are there ways to save costs? Like, can we do less frequent pickups? Can we, you know, pick up, let's say, you know, trash every week, but green waste every other week? And, you know, can people go to smaller bins? I've even seen somebody say, in fact, I thought of this myself. Can we share? Yeah, can we share? So again, maybe not for today, but I think those are some things I'd like staff to look at. Are there opportunities that make, that make sense, where we could save money? What are the public health rules that may prohibit us from doing certain things, you know? So if we could lay that out.
And like the mayor mentioned, this three-month delay will provide staff some more time to be able to dig deep into those questions.
I echo those same statements. I've heard them. I know my colleagues have heard them also, you know, how people can perhaps combine with their neighbors, because, you know, two households, which have, you know, certainly downsides, maybe empty nesters or whatever, they have maybe, they produce one or two small bags of trash a week, and it may create a financial burden. Go ahead, Councilmember Brodmann.
I just wanted to add to what the mayor's saying, is the fact that the last time we talked about this, I mentioned the fact that I only put my trash out every other week, and Mr. Imran, he said, that doesn't matter. So they can't do that.
We can always ask, and we'll receive the answer we receive. Go ahead, Councilmember Brodmann.
The last thing I wanted to say, oh, now I'm losing my train of thought, but I did want to, I did want to respond to a comment that Mr. Dish made, who's on his phone right now, but maybe he'll, he'll hear me. Oh, he's taking notes, okay. And Mr. Mohill referred to this, too. This is political, okay? But in a way that maybe you're not thinking about, okay? So if we are, if we ultimately got, let's say, let's say 50% of the community said no rate increase, what happens? You know what happens? We have to subsidize trash collection out of the general fund. What does that mean? That means the general population, including renters and people in condos, people in multifamily situations who have already seen their rates go up three to five times, they are going to be subsidizing single-family homeowners. Is that fair? To me, that's not fair. That's the political question. Anybody that's saying, don't raise rates, is basically, probably without really realizing it, is basically saying, I want the general public to subsidize one segment of the public, which happens to be the segment of the public that's probably in a better position to withstand the financial burden. I just want that to be very clear to the public, so that we understand what we're talking about. These costs don't go away. These costs are real. We've got to cover them, okay? They're going to be covered one way or another, either through rates or through the general fund.
I was going to add that, one of our callers, who was very courteous and polite, when he said, city should absorb these costs, you know, I mean, absorbing the cost just means we're going to, as the phrase goes, was it borrow from Peter to pay Paul? It all comes from one place or another. It just means we're going to have to do less to do all the things that are required of us. So I mean, this is something that we need to address, and no one's going to be happy. I acknowledge that. I'm not happy about it, that we're here facing this decision, but I think we need to do the responsible thing. Any other comments? Councilmember Najarian?
So the rich get richer, essentially.
If we don't increase the rates.
Right. So because we'll be putting out a new 218 notice, all of those 890 letters are void, correct?
I'm looking at Ms. Van Miden. I believe that's the case.
Based on a different price?
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Kosakian, members of City Council, Councilmember Najarian. I'm going to invite Mia Yun to come up and address the specifics of the 218, since she's been working very closely.
She has been sticking around all evening.
And she deserves an opportunity.
I'd like to give a break to staff, but go ahead. You've earned it.
Good evening, Mayor Kosakian, members of the City Council, Councilmember Najarian. So Prop 218 requires notice to be sent out when new rates are proposed to be adopted. Since there's going to be a new hearing in July with new rates that are different from these, and new notice will be sent out and an opportunity to protest, those, any protests that are received then will be counted towards that count, not this current hearing.
So, just so everyone knows. The last thing I want to say is, sort of, you know, a theme that is continually repeated is, oh, well, it's prior councils' fault for not raising rates, as if residents were beating down the door telling us to raise rates. But let's just clear, let's just clear something up, because I've been on those councils. According to the information we had, 23% of the cost increases are due to not raising rates in 12 years. So if you look at the standard 96-gallon refuse bin with an increase of $13 per month, my math, about 25% of $13 is about $3.30 a month for us not raising rates the past 12 years. So if you look at some of the other factors, processing fees, 1383 administration, Shaw Canyon landfill closure, recurrent capital expenditures, recycling market decline, they dwarf the fact, the factor of not raising the rates for 12 years. So if anybody wants to get on that, I'm going to be ready. When it comes ready to discuss it, just laying out the.
It's a multitude of factors, certainly, but.
Just laying it out there.
Doesn't matter how we got here, we are here now.
Don't put it on the old councils, though. Don't. Don't you, don't. I won't go down without a fight.
Do you need actual specific council action, or do you have direction? Yes, go ahead. Councilmember Asatrian.
These notices that go out, are they multilingual?
Multilingual.
Multilingual.
Yes, yes, council.
That's correct.
I live in a multifamily, so I don't, okay. And are, do they, are they like legal language, or can people understand what? Can the general public understand what's?
They're, the same language that we used in English, we also translated it to Armenian and Spanish.
Okay. But is the language in there, is it written like an attorney? Yeah, is it like, an attorney wrote it, or is it like, I wrote an email to you?
Mia Yun.
The latter.
Okay. All right.
All right.
Oh, you did.
I'm sorry, we have clarification.
No, I just want to clarify, that the language in the notices are of a legal nature, because the notices themselves have to meet certain legal requirements. I don't want to speak for the city attorney, but if you want to elaborate.
Since we're going to do a second notice, can we look into, as we're sending out that notice, if we can put like a cover sheet that is, I remember this issue when Hassan was the planning director, and those notices were going out for renovations and new projects coming out, and I knew that a lot of the residents that were getting these notices about projects coming in their neighborhood just couldn't understand what they were getting. So this was like a discussion way back when. And I remember that when Hassan was here, there was a period that he implemented this more, aside from the legal language that's required, something that's more palatable to the general public.
Yes, Councilmember Asatrian, as Mr. Tiktongian mentioned, there is very specific requirement Prop 218 language that needs to go in these notices, but we look into a simplified version as a cover sheet or as a separate attachment that could go with this notice.
All right, with that, since we, there's nothing else to do on this item besides wait for it to come back, what is next?
Next is oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. We have, I think, two, one caller and one card.
Okay. Mr. Dish, go ahead.
Good evening, council. First, I want to express my salutations and announce in surprise that the first month of the year is over, and I want to salute council for recognizing last week the horrific shooting that occurred in Monterey Park. And I want to share that, I was there, my God, I was there an hour before it happened, and I expressed my sympathy as well with all the affected. I was on the phone with Mr. Mohill prior, and he was so kind, I mean, on that day, and he was so kind as to call me the next day and make sure I was okay. I have indeed befriended Mr. Mohill over the past couple of months, as he raised awareness about such pressing issues as the Shaw Canyon, power plant, Verdugo Wash Project, and now the trash rate increases. But I also want to respectfully disagree with Mr. Mohill about his comments last week about the invocation process, I think, where we mentioned the original natives, the Tongva. I don't think his comments were sound necessarily. Of course, we should and do respect the military. All I would say is, A, all of that respect for military and so on is already implied, because when we celebrate the Tongva as the original inhabitants, from which position can we make that? It has to be from one where not only do we recognize our own wrongdoings of the past, but we also celebrate the military for keeping us safe. And I quote an Israeli professor who says, "The highest form of patriotism is to be critical of your nation when they do wrong." So my second point is just, when he said that there's no military personnel here, again, I want to bring up him as an example, because he, as a veteran, as a veteran after all, speaks here all the time, and we thank him for his service, including his continued selfless acts of appearing at council for years. Now, even if we may violently disagree. So now to the topic. I'm getting a little tired of council, with all due respect. And I want to hone in my attention to staff. And here, not that I'm trying to flatter to you, but all the glory goes to you, to who? To you, Mr. Brodmann. Why? Because you mentioned, I think it was last week, correct me if I'm wrong, but you mentioned that, and I'm sincere, your wonderful comments, how we should increase not only accountability, but I would say even power of the staff, like, and I want to second that motion. Okay, who am I? I am a nobody, maybe, but also some. I am a nobody maybe, but also some kind of self-appointed, uh, court philosopher here. I just want to double down and propose an increase of staff salaries as well, and I am sincere. But we already heard how much we're expecting from staff and so on. More on this later, uh, because staff is clearly, and I'm reading now, uh, those who do the dirty work in the background. Staff is like gossip and dirty jokes, the stuff of communion, holding this body together, the pillars of our city's smooth functioning, the ominous-sounding anonymous state bureaucrats. And I am for more bureaucracy, but for a smooth functioning bureaucracy which delivers. Uh, I just want to briefly mention the definitions of staff. Staff, one, all the people employed by a particular organization. Then, staff, a big stick used as a weapon or for walking. Like imagine the depictions of Moses parting the Red Sea, holding a big stick. He cannot do it without the stick. Staff. And finally, my favorite, because I'm a musician, staff, the five lines onto which five notes are placed without which the whole thing would collapse. So again, my formula is, uh, forget council, my money is on staff. I am for staff, but don't misunderstand me. I'm not saying, "Let's replace council with staff." I, incidentally, I think this is one of the best councils we've had, which delivers. And I'm definitely not saying council is useless. I'm just saying, what? What already the philosopher Hegel knew about monarchy? And I know you're not monarchs, but very briefly, uh, uh, don't be afraid. According to Hegel, a monarch is not really the all-knowing, all-powerful ruler, we usually assume. The monarch just has two jobs, to sign papers that are prepared by his staff and to produce an heir. So, okay, you don't have to produce an heir, but, but, you know, my point is just this that...
I appreciate that.
Yeah, 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 no. If you just forgive the expression, you need some kind of figure of, uh, like a contingent person at the top for power to function. That's all I'm saying. Time is running low, so when I say forget council, that's all I mean. You know what I mean? Like glory to staff and conditionally to council. That's all I'm saying. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dish.
Did, did you run that salary increase by Mr. Mo Hill? Is he okay with that?
I plead the fifth. I plead the fifth. I will not disclose what I mentioned with Mo Hill. Thank you.
Let's go to the caller, please.
We have one caller, Herbert Milano. Herbert, you're on air. You have five minutes.
Thank you very much, uh, Mayor Kasakian and members of the city council. Many of the topics that you are facing today are the long-term projects that, in my opinion, have not been faced adequately in the past 20 years. And now you're finally facing it. And I have a contention that many of the problems with some of the topics in the other agenda items, uh, I could address later to, to tie in to what I'm about to speak about today. In order to talk about these items that have to do with the city finance, I'm addressing the annual comprehensive financial reports, the latest one that we have, pages 104 and 107, and pages 192 and 195. In the last 10 years, and by the way, these pages include roughly the last 10 years of activity in a summary form, so it's easy to access the trends that are very troubling about the city's finances. The inflation rate between 2013 and 2022 is 18%, 18. The property tax revenues to the city of Glendale increased by 60%. So you would imagine that the property tax increases would have been more than offset any inflation cost that would have occurred, right? There should be enough money just from property tax increases to meet the obligations of the city, but it can't, right? You just, this, a few minutes ago, you were talking about the fact that there were not enough resources to even hire one person to do a survey. But the pension liability increased 76% and only since 2015. So since 2013, inflation increased by 18, the pension liability increased by 76%. And it's been increasing at much, at least twice the rate of inflation since at least 20 years that have been following this. And I obtained the data from the city's property tax reports from the financial statement since 1978, when Proposition 13 came into being. And I've been hearing lately, many individuals whose background on Proposition 13 is insufficient to really assess what has transpired. And because of the structure of Proposition 13, where eventually properties turn over, the property taxes really never been constrained except for the first two years that it passed, in 1979, you know, and, uh, in 1980. So what has happened? What happened is that the pension obligation that was incurred in, in 2001 has been affecting the city's, uh, financial in a way that has been incredibly detrimental across all departments, but especially fire and police. So much so that a couple of years ago, when I checked the total compensation for the police chief, it was over a half a million dollars, according to the reports that are basically published in Transparian California. And that is a very troubling situation, that of all of the things that were delayed and postponed during a period of 20 years, everything from energy needs to water conservation needs, to trash, uh, it needs, to the landfill needs, all of these things quietly, they have not been properly reported during the budget study sessions. That's my contention. But the biggest one of all you're still not facing, and that's the pension liability that continues to increase at a rate in which it makes the rest of the city unsustainable. And so I would like to request, or the city council members, to request from the finance department, the actual revenues that come in from property taxes since 1978. And if you need the documents, I have. So that you get from your own official department, the actual amount of property tax that has been collected by Glendale, despite all the changes that occurred in, in 2010, 2011 from the state of California. Despite that, where redevelopment was taken over by the, by the state, even then, our tax property increases have been more than sufficient to meet all of the needs of Glendale, except that one, the pension liability. And it is the support of cowbers and the mismanagement of that, of those funds that are, we are paying for it every single day. And that is a long-term obligation that the city needs to address and face. If you don't do that, you, other city council members in the future are gonna be facing that problem in an even more dire situation. And so I request that you actually get the data that is proper conducted by the old finance department so that you can get a better perspective as to what the impact has been on Proposition 13, because it may very well change your mind drastically in your perception of what that though has done for property owners and all of the elderly people who depend on their homes in which to live without having to be...
Your, your time is up. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Uh, what is, uh...
We have new, one, one new business.
Councilmember Najarian?
Thank you. I move that the council hereby approves and ratifies the city's appeal in the judgment of the Los Angeles, Los Angeles Superior Court in the matter of Glendale Historical Society versus the City of Glendale at All, LASC, case number 21STCP01852.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Asatrian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Steve.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Kasakian?
Yes. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Is there a second? We stand adjourned. Good night.